Good evening, everyone. I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of September 10, 2025 to order. To start us off this evening, we are honored to have Commander retired, Mr. Tony Aguilera, here with us tonight to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And he'll have a few comments before he starts.
Mayor, City Council. I'm great. A day thirty-one-year-old conservative activist lost his life in Utah while making a presentation. He leaves behind a wife, two children, and his family. No matter your political views, our Constitution guarantees us freedom of speech. I may not agree with his political views, but he was entitled to express his views. Please pray for him, his family, and our country. Please face the flag. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commander. And as we start today, we're gonna, we have a, a presentation. But first, I'll note, you know, you'll see, as you came into council today, the flag, flags are flown at half-mast, and they were called to fly at half-mast in honor of Harold Manster. And city staff has a short presentation that we'll watch now. Harold Manster's vision and generosity have permanently enriched the community he called home. His legacy lives on in the thriving cultural institutions, revitalized downtown, and the countless lives that he touched by his compassion and commitment to making Palm Springs a better place for all. He exemplified the profound impact one person can make when business success is paired with genuine care for community and an unwavering dedication to the greater good. He knew how to get it done. Harold Manster, 1937 to 2025. Now, if we can have a moment of silence? Thank you all. Next, before we go into accept the agenda, I just want to share that, you know, every year on December 12, nearly 20,000 faithful begin the pilgrimage in honor of Our Lady of Guadalupe, right here in Palm Springs. It's a powerful 30-mile journey of faith, culture, and unity that crosses every city in the valley. This year, the sacred walk has been canceled, not by choice, but by fear. The largest pilgrimage outside of Mexico City has been silenced due to ICE raids and the immigration enforcement that have left families afraid to walk openly in their own streets. What was once a joyful celebration is now a painful reminder of what's at risk: our freedom to express faith without fear, to honor heritage without worry, and to walk in unity without the threat of detention. As a Latino, this hits home. I was sworn in as mayor on December 12, a date deeply symbolic to many. This moment now feels like a call to action. Though the physical pilgrimage has paused, its spirit lives on in our homes, in our communities, and in our hearts. This is more than just a cancellation. It's a cultural wound, and we must meet it with leadership that protects the vulnerable, uplifts our immigrant families, and defends the freedom to walk in faith without fear. Now, we go on to acceptance of the agenda. The City Council will discuss the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, can we do a roll call?
If you have to.
Yes, sir. Let the record reflect that all members are present.
Thank you, sir.
See, she doesn't let me get away with anything. Good job. City Council will discuss the order of the agenda. May I amend the order? Add urgency items, note abstentions or no votes, or consent calendar items, and request consent calendar items be removed from the consent calendar for discussion. City Council may also remove the items from the consent calendar prior to that portion of the agenda. At this time, I call for the acceptance of the agenda. Any items to be removed?
Thank you, Mayor. Here we go. Yes, could I, item D, item L, and a comment on X?
Okay, no other items? Wow, we're off to a great start. Sadly, I have a comment on 1G, S, and W, and I'd like to remove 1X and O, and we're removing 1H, the item entirely from the agenda. That item's not going to come forward tonight. Okay, now we have a motion made by Councilmember Gardner, seconded by Councilmember Bernstein.
Just one, sorry, one thing. If I could just be marked as abstaining from 1A, wasn't at that meeting.
So noted.
Okay, motion with Mayor Gardner abstaining from 1A. And removing 1H from the agenda, comments on DLX, removing X and O, and additional comments on GS and W. Did everybody vote? Councilmember Gardner? Beautiful. Report a closed session, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, members of the public, the City Council met in closed session earlier this afternoon. It should be noted that Mayor Protem Soto recused from the Palm Springs Promenade and DIR matters because of a campaign contribution. The other reportable action is on the Center for Biological Diversity versus City of Palm Springs. There was a motion made by Mayor DeHart, seconded by Mayor Protem Soto, with a four-zero-zero vote, with Councilmember Ready recusing to defend that lawsuit. Otherwise, there's no reportable action.
All right, thank you. Now, we have public testimony on non-public hearing items only. Time's been set aside to allow members of the public to address the City Council on agenda items. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker, and first person up is Brad Anderson, please. Following Brad will be Joan Martin.
Good afternoon, Brad Anderson. I currently live in the city of Ancevarad. I wanted to speak on items, consent items, 1A today, and, and I reserved the right, hopefully, to talk on item 3C and possibly under others if needed. I do this just because you only allow two minutes of speaking time for the complete agenda, except two items or two consent items. I mean, I don't know what you'd call them, but anyway, items, 1A is the minutes of the meeting of the past meeting, not the most current meeting. I, I, I guess I urge you not to approve those as written. Most of the people of your city probably are unaware that the minutes have been changed during the COVID crisis by the City Council, by the state of, it was in a state of emergency that you did this, that their public comments will not be recorded into the written minutes, maybe just the names, but any other comments, stance taken on any public hearing items or any other items will not be listed in the minutes. And, and that's extreme. A lot of cities and special districts are doing that now, but this city really insultrated or started that whole domino effect now. And I just, I guess I just want to bring it, people's attention, that, that extreme measure, it's free speech, it's censorship in a way. And, and, and while I'm speaking of censorship, I wanted just to echo one of the, one of the announcements earlier of Mr. Charlie Kirk and his, his willingness to be involved in free speech matters. And, and this is a free speech matter. It's a censorship matter, and it really needs to readjust to how it was before. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan Martin, will be followed by Michael Joseph Pickin. Joan, Joan Martin, Michael. Michael, you're up next, though.
Let's see if you can hear me. I can't hear anybody. I'm calling about the gas station that wants to be a storage place for a very nice businessman. There've been a lot of confusions going on between the city and the gentleman. They're both working in good faith, but this is too, this is going to deal with an unresolved situation tonight. I lived down the street fifty years, same street, and I want to say that whatever else is going on, since both parties feel they're doing their very best for themselves and the other, that it might just be a good idea to wait until somebody wants to develop that property as a business on that business street and then require X number of parking places on the street, things which may be considered ideal, since it often is a business, but not related to Joe Prainer and his storage. So that's my main idea for tonight. I could talk some more, but I don't think two minutes is long enough to do anything. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Michael Joseph Pickin, followed by Eve Brackman.
We are actually, I'm sorry, I thought you called.
Michael Joseph Pickin, this is a letter to the Palm Springs City Council through Scott Styles, City Manager. I will deliver. This is regarding Free Speech Zone Meeting Request and Fraud Declaration. Dear Scott Styles, City Manager, please share this with the entire City Palm Springs City Council. A few requests. Number one, I ask for clarification of the Free Speech Protest Zone at City Hall for citizens to protest their elected officials. Number two, I ask for a set meeting with the mayor. Five years ago, I met with Mayor Middleton, and she did not understand my concerns. I then asked to meet with Mayor Bernstein, with no luck. I ask for assistance with setting a meeting with my Riverside County Fourth District Supervisor v. Manuel Perez. I have in five years physically gone to Supervisor Perez's office three times, spoke with his staff two times, and sent a half a dozen emails that went nowhere. Number three, this is your notice. I declare fraud in all service agencies in Palm Springs Coachella Valley. What this does is put all concerns under Department of Defense, Department of War. It stops all federal privacy, identity protections for non-citizens and those double-dipping services. Donald Trump is going to become Palm Springs' new best friend.
Thank you, and Eve Brackman.
Hi there. I'm here to speak on the appeal. Oh, I'm sorry. Wrong microphone? Sorry. I'm here, and as you can see, I'm unfamiliar with your City Council chambers and your appellate practices. So we're here to present on the appeal for item 3B this evening. Mr. Prainer, I believe we get 12 minutes for that presentation. I just wanted, out of an abundance of caution, submitted a speaker card to make sure both my client and I will be allowed to speak at that time.
Okay, thank you. Is 12 minutes correct? We'll check on that by the time you come back.
We'll do our best in five minutes.
Thank you.
We'll be better. Thank you.
Next, we have Jenny Foote, please.
Good evening. I'm speaking on item X on the consent calendar. I wanted to first commend the city and the City Council for recognizing the shortcomings in city processes and procedures and creating safeguards that hopefully will present this type of fraud from ever being perpetrated against the city again in the future. I do, however, feel that there is an important part of the response to the grand jury report that seems to deny the fact that the $700,000 or $500,000 of taxpayer money was wasted. That is in the answer to F9, which states that the City of Palm Springs had inadequate oversight, which resulted in a loss of over $700,000. The city's response was to not agree, and what the city said was the city disagrees with this finding. DAP Health was able to complete the pilot program, and the city is unable to reconcile a specific amount of loss. That does not feel honest and transparent or actually efficient. After all, your good work of changing how the city safeguards against fraud, this one sentence makes it sound like it was okay because the project got funded by DAP. And oh, by the way, the city doesn't really know how many taxpayer dollars were lost. So it's a ridiculous statement to me. It makes us look foolish and dishonest. We all respected that the city took responsibility for the lax oversight and made significant changes. The answer makes it sound like it's all okay because DAP backfilled the monies. That answer makes it sound like it's all okay. It's like me saying it's okay that I robbed the bank because someone else deposited funds, so there's no loss. Even worse, the indicted accused perpetrator of this fraud will be able to use that statement in his defense. Quote, "The city denies that there was a loss and is unable to cite a specific amount."
Jenny, your two minutes is expired.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Joseph Prainer. City Clerk, do we have any other folks scheduled to speak online? We do. Philip Hodges? Philip, are you, can you hear us?
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Welcome back. May Harold Manster's memory be a blessing. I'm also speaking about 1X. The grand jury found that $700,000 taxpayer dollars disappeared under the city's watch. When DAP took over, only $30,000 remained. The program was completed only because DAP's donors bailed out City Hall. Look, I, I know this council inherited the problem, but you're responsible for this response, and right now it seems misleading to the public. It needs to be changed in at least two important ways. Number one, it implies less responsibility because DAP, quote, "completed the program." But the truth is, a healthcare nonprofit had to divert donations meant for patient care to cover taxpayer losses. That makes the city's failure worse, not better. Second, listen to this contrast. The grand jury's finding says the city's inadequate oversight of the pilot program resulted in a loss of over $700,000. Now, listen to how the city answers that. Quote, "DAP Health was able to complete the pilot program, and the city is unable to reconcile a specific amount of loss," as if that makes it okay. Translation, we lost track of $700,000, but since we can't count it, it doesn't count. With respect, that is absurd. Part of the reason you can't count it is because the city kept paying even when the required reports weren't provided. Saying you asked for the reports is irrelevant when you kept cutting checks without them. Crucially, DAP's donors gave for patient care, not to bail out City Hall. So I don't think you're doing it tonight, but when it comes back, please don't approve the draft in the current form. The public record must acknowledge responsibility for the $700,000 loss plainly and honestly.
Philip, your time is expired. Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any others?
No further speakers.
All right, excellent. Aren't you proud of me? I knew that we had one. Very good. Okay, next item, let's see, is the consent calendar. I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar with items DHLO and X removed. Is that already done? Made by Councilmember Gardner, seconded by Councilmember Bernstein. Councilmember Gardner? I think Councilmember Bernstein has a, a bet on what time we're going to get out of the meeting because he's streamlining things tonight. Excellent. Okay, thank you. Motion carries. So first, may we have a staff report on item D? The destruction of records, obsolete.
May I have some questions?
No staff report required?
Unless you want, you want to do a staff report.
Are councilmembers requesting a staff report?
I just have some questions.
Okay, we got some questions.
Thank you. All right. So just with regard to demolition, destruction of, of old records, I understand the, the policy has changed recently, and, and just, and just looking at what we're destroying, just a couple of questions for staff. I see that these are personnel files, and these are kind of more recent employees, is listed here, that have Mayor Oden, you know, just several people who are still in the area, still more, more current, if you will. So, so I guess the question is, I understand the, the reason to get rid of files, but would we not be want to keep the digitized copies? And, and I say that because there are many cases over and over again where, whether it may be a CalPERS issue, a workers' comp issue, or something comes up, and we need to refer back. So it just seems to me that we could at least keep the digitized files.
Good evening, Councilmember Ready. Thanks for the question. I've had a chance to explore some of your concerns, and you've asked about sort of the current records that are being destroyed versus more historical records. Why have they been taken in this order? And I was able to confirm that we are, the, the first round of destruction is being done with current files that are within an office. So instead of paying to recover items from storage, they're going through and proposing to destroy current records that are physically in an office that have met the retention schedule. To answer your question... To answer your question about digitizing versus paper records, the point behind the schedule is to destroy the record so that it no longer exists. So if we have a retention schedule and we destroy paper but then retain a digital copy, we've sort of circumvented the policy in its entirety and still have a record. So if the council would like to, say, for personnel files, we would like to keep a longer record, we can certainly amend the resolution, but to comply with the spirit of the policy, we would have to destroy it in all of its forms.
Okay, so what was the reason for not keeping the record? I didn't understand what you said. If it's not a space issue, I get that we've got lots of old files in storage and the goal is to get rid of those, but why would we not want to keep the digitized forms?
Okay, so I want to just opine in as well. As it relates to the records management policy, those records, everything that's before you on those attachments have reached the retention schedule. They have ended. Those records are no longer, by law, no longer required to be maintained. If we digitize those records, then we're essentially putting those records back in our records. So it defeats the purpose. Those records, once we remove them regardless, you know, they are removed by state statute. And we're required to, you know, if we have an up-to-date, we're trying to update, we haven't done anything with records management in a long, long, long time. So it seems concerning at this point, but the reason for it is, you know, to limit our liability. Certainly, we become exposed for litigations and things like that when we keep records past the retention schedule. And that's what we're trying to do, update our records retention schedule so that we are in compliance with what's required, how long we should keep records.
Well, a couple other questions then. It seems to me, the state requirement is a minimum. We can keep them as long as we want.
You can.
All right, so that's just a minimum, that we have to keep them. It would just seem with personnel files that we have an interest if an issue comes up that we could defend ourselves with that file. If we, if they no longer exist, we can't use them to our benefit. You know, it might make sense, employees, you know, say over 20 years ago, but employees recently is five, six years ago, there still could be issues. Now, I presume you're going to be doing that for police and fire as well. And those are always replete with, you know, claims coming later. And I wasn't clear of the liability issue you said. How does that create liability if we keep the records?
I don't know if it necessarily creates liability, but just as much as if there's something in the records that could, the city could defend, there's a potential that there's something in there that could create liability. So, we don't know. You know, one of the other reasons most agencies adopt a records retention policy and stick to it is so that the city doesn't have a lot of records that when we receive a Public Records Act request or a subpoena, takes a lot of time, both staff time and city attorney time going through, potentially reviewing for redactions and then redacting, you know, sticking to a records retention policy avoids having to go through all of that and spending that time and resource.
Sounds a little bit like being less transparent. Let me ask you, what about all the records we have, how is, on applications, on projects, and things of that nature? Are those destroyed as well? And the digitized versions destroyed of those records as well? For planning projects? Under this policy?
So, we're only, the, all the records that are being considered now that are before you are the only records that have been determined to be, you know, required or where, they've retained, they've reached their retention period. As it relates, every office, every department, as you mentioned, they do have the option if they want to keep those records longer. They can amend our retention policy and say, hey, instead of keeping them for five, we want to keep them for 10. But each, the retention policy itself lists all of the documents, and it says what's required by the state and how long those items should be kept. But that doesn't, you know, if they want to keep them longer, they certainly can.
Okay, so for example, if one of the people on these lists who hasn't been gone that long from City Hall, there's an issue on their benefits, or a CalPERS issue, or work comp issue, how will we determine, go back and piece it together?
I'd like to ask the HR director to join us because she'll be able to address the work comp and some of the payroll injury components.
Stephanie George, HR Director. Councilmember Ready, I'm about to put your mind at ease. Payroll records are maintained separately, so we will still be able to determine that, and as are workers comp records and serious misconduct records and police investigations.
And are those subject to the retention ordinance that destroys them, and when are they destroyed?
Much longer. I'd have to have the city clerk speak to the retention policy itself, but the employee files that we're destroying are onboarding things, things that wouldn't get us into trouble if we had a CalPERS audit or benefits issue.
Okay, well, that makes me feel better because there's many, many cases where that happens with frequency. So then, I guess, is, then, to your point, the record you are keeping, the payroll records the other, how long do you keep those? Has this policy changed that as well?
No, our policy is not changing pretty much. We're just updating our records. We're not changing anything that's required. We're updating based upon our state statutes and our laws that require us to keep them for a certain period. But the departments, again, have the ability to keep those longer if they so. You know, we're not automatically just destroying records just because. They're contacting us, we have a policy, and the policy says, the director has to sign off saying that it's okay. And then it goes to our city attorney, then it comes to the city clerk's office, and then it comes before you. So there is a, you know, a process for it. So we're not just automatically just, you know, destroying records, you know, but we do get the okay from the department directors whether or not those are records that, based upon the retention policy, if they reach the retention period, then they're subject to. But that doesn't automatically mean that it's going to automatically happen. There is a process for it.
Okay, thank you. I guess, Mayor, I'm sorry. Please.
Just to answer your question, Councilmember, because I know that you have a long history with the city, even though you weren't serving on council. Last year, July 2024, there was an update to the records retention. So that might be why you think that it's a little bit different? It wasn't substantial changes, it was very minor changes, but there was an update at that time, which is probably why you're seeing some difference.
Yes, thank you.
Just to...
Well, it's helpful, I just want to make sure that the important personnel records, things of that, aren't being destroyed along, because they say personnel files, and those things are generally in a personnel file. And just for clarification, I presume in the plan, to Flynn, this does not include the planning documents, the entitlements, all those maps that you have digitized?
That is correct. We will retain copies of those because we do need them for future efforts.
Yes, all right, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, so we do need a motion to, on 1D. Beautiful. Next is item 1L. Is that pulled or just a staff report?
Just a question, Mayor, thank you. Thank you. This is with regard to, on South Palm Canyon Drive, it's been a long time coming, it's a project that's going to put in the bike lane and reconfigure, it's a state grant. We're accepting the grant this evening, and I understand that it will be coming back, you'll be bidding the project, and so I'll be able to tell the residents in the community when that's happening. But I did have one request for the engineer and the city manager. When we actually do the design in that, I just want to confirm, or to the extent possible, on the intersections where you do the handicap curb cutouts, there's a couple models that we're doing. Some of them are narrow, where someone's crossed the street and they have to kind of zigzag to get up, and then some are wide. And if possible, I want to request that on this project, when those are installed, that they're the wider curb cuts for the handicap access instead of the narrow. I don't know if you can comment on that now, or maybe you can get back to me on that.
Well, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, Joel Montalvo, city engineer. So the wider, the wider curbs generally require a larger footprint, and that's something that we could look at on this project and a case-by-case basis. So, just to describe, the narrower curb returns, they fit in a typical corner cutback when we have, when we take property. The wider ones, generally the ones that I think I've seen in the downtown area that are very wide, they actually come into the street. So we will look at that in combination to see if there's the ability to put them, but they're not a one-size-fits-all, so we can't go and put them everywhere unless we do the research, which we will, and if there's enough real estate to do that work.
Thank you.
And I, Mr. Montalvo, I think to the councilman's request, we have examples of both in the downtown area, where we've done some of the wider ones, some of the narrow ones. Again, to your point, depends a little bit on the real estate that's available.
Yeah, it definitely is intersection by intersection, available real estate. Sometimes if you really want to do that, you actually have to go take property away. So we will look at it and what's best for the project, and we'll do our best to accommodate that.
Any other questions, comments? I'll entertain a motion, staff recommendation on 1L. All right, next we have O. I have no reason to. I should have, but I had a mistake, city attorney. I should have pulled U and I didn't.
Do you want to ask the council if the council's agreeable to pulling item U?
Counsel, are you agreeable? Okay, all right, so O, item U, staff report, please. You know, I can really just go into the question I had, and especially in light of something that has just happened recently that is reminding us of similar circumstances in years prior. I notice in looking at our statement of qualifications and the evaluation, that the customer doesn't have, we don't have a process identified for the customer to file a grievance. Is there a grievance process for a customer who's been towed in place that is just not in this paperwork that we have?
So according to the contract, as part of the RFQ process, responders are asked to include a minimum of three references whom the company has provided similar services. Customer service complaints will be evaluated using historical department data and information obtained from the references and other law enforcement agencies, in that the chief of police is responsible, or is designated responsible for listening to those grievances as they might arise. So there is a process. Now, the particular one that you're referring to, Mr. Mayor, was actually not a police tow, it was a tow off of private property. And there's a, obviously a distinct difference between the two. But it does affect the contract, it could affect the contract that we have. And there, if with cause, the contract can be modified and changed, is my understanding.
Yeah, and it's not the specific incident, it's the specific company, that there's been a pattern of customer challenges, is what has raised this for me. And I don't, I don't see that we have a, the customer has a way to raise their concern, whether it's with the city attorney's office or the police department. So is that a defined process, regardless of who ordered the tow?
I don't believe that it is, but I can certainly consult with the city attorney to find out if there's language that can be included that would permit us to be able to take a look at the contract. I do know that, I'm backing up here, there is grounds for cancellation, revocation, or suspension that is in 11.82.150, that the agreement shall be subject to cancellation, revocation, or suspension by the chief of police, either as whole or as any person or vehicle described therein. The procedure for such cancellation, revocation, or suspension is set forth in the section, and then it goes into a variety of reasons for that, which is from non-payment to failure to maintain adequate equipment or safety, or deviation from the scheduled rates, equipment violations. It lists a whole host of things that could be considered. So in my understanding, and the city attorney might agree or disagree, that we certainly could take a look at that and may suspend the tow service from providing those services for a period of time.
I would agree with that, and if the council's so inclined, you can give direction to proceed with this RFP, but include in there a provision for a customer complaint process, tracking those complaints, and maybe some language in the contract that sets some kind of objective standards for termination in the event of a certain number of verified complaints. All of that is possible if the council's so inclined.
Yeah, okay, I think that really offers a solution there. The other, the other item, or the point there is, on page 41, the statement of qualifications as part of the evaluation, we have the point scale listed out. And where do the customer complaints that PD's aware of come into this scoring schedule? So if somebody's got the super great customer satisfaction notes coming in, you know, are they getting the same score, 10, versus somebody who, there are quite a number of unhappy customers, where does the customer satisfaction come into play? I know we asked for it, and that's a criteria that you have, you have the ability to take into account when letting the RFP, but I don't see it in the evaluation criteria. Is it embedded in, I'm assuming it's embedded in one of the six?
Criteria.
Yeah.
Hello, Tabitha Richards, Procurement. So the customer complaints would be in successful completion of similar service arrangements with the 15.
And is that the only line where customer satisfaction is? Yeah, okay. All right, and it's at 15 on the scale, so, okay, I'm happy with that. But I think it would be appropriate for us to add some of the languages the city attorney shared with us in accepting this staff report. Now, heads up? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion approving staff recommendation with the notes as mentioned by city attorney. Motion's made by, by DeHart?
Yes.
I can't second it also. Thank you. Councilmember Ready? Okay, next is, somebody, comment on S?
Is that?
S.
It was X, and you pulled it.
Oh, X, not S?
No, it was X, and you pulled it.
Well, I'm just not batting anything tonight, am I? Okay, comment on W. Oh, that's me. So I don't need a staff report on this item, I just, I don't feel comfortable with what we're putting forward on the letter, and I've raised several points that I don't, I don't think the letter is reflecting the concerns I had with our agreement with Inland Empire Health Plan. And I feel that we have even less authority when it comes to hiring the executive director. We are calling out to have a vote... We are calling out to have a vote in the hiring of executive director, which is less than what we previously had, where we could approve the executive director. So I'm challenged on that piece because we don't include in this item, how many votes are there going to be? If there's just two votes, this is pretty good, but if there's 10 votes, we have absolutely no voice in who the executive director's going to be. So that's not defined here, and I'm challenged with that. And on item 3.4, we, council did ask that we emphasize that the goals of Blue Zones have to be in alignment with council's goals, that council sets. We did include that. We included a beautifully written paragraph. But we're using the two words "best efforts," and I know legally that's saying that somebody is going to do their best to align the goals, but I don't think that's good enough. We don't need someone's best efforts, we need their commitment that they're going to align their work with city council's work. Councilmember Bernstein?
I was just going to ask, isn't best efforts is a pretty strong requirement?
In legal terms, it's the highest, yes.
But I do agree with your other point on the executive director.
Yeah. There's nothing higher than best efforts?
There's good faith, which is kind of, good faith, and then there's best efforts.
Okay.
It's reasonable.
All right. And on 3.2, this has been, not a concern, but this has been a priority point that has been raised from day one, and that was the amount of time city staff would be spending on this project. I raised it when we first approved the contract or the agreement, that we would only approve it if there was a very, very limited requirement of staff to be engaged. We include the writing here in 3.2 as council requested, but I'm challenged with, we don't have any, there's no limit of resources, we're not putting a limit on the amount of time and energy that our staff can expend on using city resources. And I don't know, does this say the city manager can pull the plug? We already have the right to cancel the agreement at any time if we're not happy. So that is already something that we've, that is in our agreement. So I'm looking at this new writing that we put in here. Does this give the city manager the ability to say, okay, I'm getting reports from staff, and we're really spending too much time?
I think it does, yes.
Okay, all right, then I'm good with that. Item 3.1, council asked for this to come in, and I thank you, reporting updates and financial accounting. So I think we have a good sample of what we're expecting when those updates are supposed to come in, but what is missing is the project updates being aligned with council goals. So is that here? Are these updates including their reporting on the council goals and how the work of Blue Zones is aligned with city council goals?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, Teresa Galavan, Assistant City Manager. I think we can include in our regular reporting how the projects align. We can make that part of the report.
So can we have it written down here? If it's not written, we will forget. I won't remember what happened tomorrow. So I think it needs to be written down in part of our letter with the contractor.
I know that the amendment has been signed by IEHP. I feel like we can, that would be something they would be agreeable to, whether we can make a note on the agreement or not.
Did we know that it's already signed? Why are we even talking about it?
This is a receivable file.
Mr. Mayor, I think to your point, I think it's a very reasonable request when we work with them on getting our first monthly report from them. I think your main point is that we need to make sure that these project monthly operational reports align with 3.4, which is the, with our city goals. So I think we need to make very clear to Blue Zones that when they prepare that first report to us, that there's a matchup with what our city council goals are and how they're reporting out their operational reports. So we will certainly follow up with them on that point. I think it's easy for us to convey that.
Yeah, if I could just expand on that as well. The item 3.1 on reporting updates and financial accounting, that was based off of our request for a bit more transparency, and they are open to it, and if there's a specific structure or kind of alignment with our own city priorities, I think that would actually be more helpful to understand, make sure that those regular updates are based off of what council's looking for. But this is based off of what we are asking for, and they were amenable to. And again, I think some structure, so that way it is exactly what we're looking for when we're looking for it, is, I think they would be amenable to that.
But the contract, or the amendment's already signed. So why do we have a copy of it with no signatures on it? And the public has seen this, and there's agreement with no signatures on it.
I'm not sure why that didn't make it into the agenda packet, but city staff has a copy of it, if somebody would like a copy of it.
Okay, and I'm raising these points, and I, Mayor Protam, you're exactly right. These amendments that we asked for, we did ask for them, and our concerns have been addressed, with the exception of the very points that I've noted. Having a voice in the appointment of the executive director, we have no voice in the appointment of the executive director. Now, if we're saying that it's implied that our appointee, you, speaking with this contractor is going to take our voice and our opinion if we're not happy with an executive director, if they're really going to take that no vote to heart and do something about it, I can't see that ever happening. If we're one of 10 votes, we have no say in who that executive director is. And if we're saying that the contractor will heed our advice, that's not written here anywhere.
Mr. Mayor, I agree. I, my understanding is that I thought we had the right, we had to approve the executive director and not just have a vote in it. I mean, it says we can cancel the contract if we're not happy with it, but that is, I agree, very different.
And I appreciate that that's there. It gives us 45 days if we're not happy, but we already have 60 days to get out of this. So we're really saying nothing.
No, I agree. I think we should have had the right to approve the executive director.
So are we able to do anything now that it's been signed?
If you'd like to agendize this for an action item, we can bring it back at the September 25 meeting and make these revisions, see if Blue Zones is agreeable to them, and have you approve these revisions at that meeting.
Okay.
I would like to just share that they did use a process that they use with all their partners, and we did have that in there, that the city have a very strong say, and the language was added that if the city does not agree with the panel, the interview panel, then the city would terminate the contract. So that added language was added in that clause, in that particular paragraph, to emphasize the importance of the city's vote there.
Where is that, though?
That is the last sentence that was added in that section, specifically to underscore the importance of Palm Springs approval.
I appreciate that, but it doesn't say that. It says, sponsor may terminate this agreement within 45 calendar days of IEHP's executive director selection decision. We already have a standing 60-day opportunity to cancel the agreement. So this just says, okay, we can cancel 15 days earlier.
Specifically for this reason, pointing out that Palm Springs approval is very important.
Right, and for, to elaborate on that process, it was the city sponsors, all the sponsors of the program itself, Blue Zones employees as well, who are part of the interview process. They are in final contracting with an excellent candidate, so at this point I can't disclose it publicly, and followed all the protocols of making sure that the liaison, myself, was in full alignment with their selection process. And they have been very inclusive with even, with many candidates even before that final candidate. So the city having an active role has actually been very true this entire time.
Still defeats the point that I'm making, that we don't have a say in the appointment of that executive director. And it's wonderful and nice that every other city is doing this. We're not every other city, and we specifically asked for some of these key points. So if there's...
So what I'm saying is, all of the sponsors for this program, for this city's program were part of that process, including the city who had a strong...
And that's fantastic. We're Palm Springs, and we're signing on this agreement with them. Councilmember Garner?
We, we elected Mayor Protam Soto to be the person that was on the committee to do this selection, and she just said that she supported the candidate that they're moving forward with. So the process is working in exactly the way that it was supposed to, because it was never supposed to come back to all of us, it was just supposed to be at the discretion of Mayor Protam, who we appointed.
Yeah, and I get that.
So it's working the way it's supposed to work.
That was requested to work.
So the last item is the grant license of our name. City attorney, is there anywhere in the agreement that we have a time period on the grant license of the use of the Palm Springs brand?
I don't believe so. I'd have to go back and look at the original agreement to see what it says.
Okay. That was another point that I believe I had raised when we asked to have this letter written. Was it a discussion that you had with them?
Around the branding?
The use of our name after the term of this agreement expires. Is there any agreement as to the years that they can use the Palm Springs brand?
Not that I'm aware of. I can defer to staff. It has been greatly focused on the executive director. As we know, this project requires someone with community trust and experience, and that has been the great majority of it.
Okay, all right. Well, it sounds like there's not much that can be done. Is that true, city attorney?
As I mentioned, if the council would like to re-agendize this for action and discussion or revisions, the council can do that.
I don't sense there's consensus that this is re-agendized. Is there consensus? Yeah, all right, we move on. Item 1X, we do, I would like a staff report on that, please.
Just for clarification, so is the council not taking any action on item 1W, not receiving and filing?
For comment.
So it's already approved, okay.
Well, no, we got to vote on it. If it's, it was pulled, so we need to vote on it. So somebody would like to make a motion to pass staff recommendation, approve staff recommendation? Okay, now we can go to item 1X, staff report, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, this item is a request to approve a response to the civil grand jury report from the County of Riverside. On June 23 of this year, the city council received a report from the Riverside County Civil Grand Jury entitled "City of Palm Springs Lacked Proper Procedures for Vetting and Monitoring of Grants." That report accompanies the staff report. It should be noted that this was the civil grand jury, which is separate and distinct from a criminal grand jury. A civil grand jury is comprised of volunteers who essentially take some time over the year to conduct investigations into local agency matters and affairs. Once the civil grand jury issues a report, under state law, there are certain responses that the legislative body is required to provide, and each grand jury report is broken down into two sections, a section of findings and a section of recommendations. As to the findings, the state law requires that the city make one of two responses. The first is that the city agrees with the finding. The second is that the city disagrees wholly or partially with the finding, in which case, if there's a disagreement, the legislative body must indicate the portion of the finding that is disputed and include an explanation for that disagreement. As to each recommendation, the city council must provide one of four responses. The first is that the recommendation has been implemented with a summary regarding the implementation action. The second is that the recommendation has not been implemented but will be implemented in the future with a timeframe for implementation. The third response for a recommendation is that the recommendation requires further analysis with an explanation as scope of the parameters of the analysis and the study and timeframe, which shall not exceed six months. And then the fourth response that is allowed for a recommendation is that the recommendation will not be implemented because it's not warranted or reasonable along with the city council's explanation. Under state law, the response from the city council is due within 90 days. In this case, that puts the response due at September 24, which is the day before the next city council regular meeting of September 25. The city staff has worked with the city attorney's office, the finance department, to respond to this, this report from the civil grand jury. I know we've received some comments from members of the public. This concludes my presentation. I'm certainly available to answer any questions along with city staff.
Okay, so by, my, and we had public comment on this, and my general feeling is we're not standing strong enough and stating strongly enough that errors were made, and it feels like some of our responses are light. Does it matter that we're even talking about it if it has to go forward by, prior to the next city council meeting?
The whole reason this is in front of you is because it's a city council response to the grand jury report, so if the council is inclined to change these, it can. If the council's so inclined, I would recommend that you give us some pretty specific language, because at the end of the day, it's a city council response to the grand jury report.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a procedural question to what you, the report? So as to each finding, it says we either have to say we agree, or we disagree wholly or impartially, and then say what portion is disputed. So, but we don't have to say which portion we agree with, or we don't normally, or, so the one that was raised in the public was, City of Palm Springs inadequate oversight resulted in a loss of over $700,000. So our response is that we disagree with this finding, and we put the partial reason that DAP Health was able to complete the pilot program, the city is unable to reconcile the specific amount of loss. But we're not actually saying which part we agree with, which is what the public comment was, that we lost the money, that money was lost. But that seems like it's not even an option. Is that correct?
The city council can identify which portion of the finding it disputes, and that kind of by default, or by, you know, what's left unsaid, would indicate, or at least it can be presumed, that the council agrees with the rest of the finding. If the council wants to specifically identify which portion of that finding it disputes, it can. There's nothing that stops the city...
I think, sorry.
There's nothing that... There's nothing that stops the city from identifying more specifically with, with a portion of the finding that it agrees with.
Okay, because that wasn't in the, well, that's not what we say, we must have, we must have put what we disagree with, we don't have, we don't have to put in what we agree with.
Sorry?
So in the explanation you gave for each finding, we say we either agree with it, we either agree with the finding, or we disagree, and then put which parts we disagree with.
Correct.
We don't have to say which parts we agree with.
Correct.
And I think that was the quest, the quest we had.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
A question. So, the City Attorney, I'm, I'm just curious if City Council wanted to make, make some changes on this, can, can an extension be granted, asked, requested of the civil grand jury for an extension? You said beyond the twenty-fourth? Is that common?
I've never seen it done before, and I don't see any language in the, in the state law that allows for it, no.
Councilmember Bernstein?
Do you have proposed changes?
Well, I, I, a couple of other things to point out. On F eight, we're saying, you know, that, the grand jury says that receipts submitted by Queer Works revealed inconsistencies in their financial statements to the City of Palm Springs. And that we're responding, saying that we never received financial statements from Queer Works. Is, is, are, is this semantics? And we're saying we never received a financial statement that we would think is, you know, accepted accounting practices type of a statement? Or we didn't receive anything on a piece of paper that said, "We spent this amount of money, and we got this amount of money," which would be a financial statement to me?
I think in our response, we were using the more technical terms. Again, this was prepared both through the City Attorney's Office, city staff, and the Finance Department, so when we read financial statements, I think we were taking that to mean the, the, the technical term. So, I don't think we're saying we didn't receive any records. Clearly, the city did receive records, at least at the, during the first phase of the project, and so we're using the more technical term.
And, and, okay, and our, and our statement is, "We never received anything from Queer Works."
It says, "The city never received financial statements from Queer Works."
Right. "We never received any financial statements."
Although, Mr. Mayor, could, and, and then, I, I think to, to the point, on F three, on F three, where it says, "We did receive invoices and progress reports issued for the $200,000," so, so is that distinguished from F eight? I, I think what you're saying is, you're interpreting that financial statements is different from the invoices.
Right, they're, the, the findings refer to different things. F three refers to monthly reports and invoices. F eight refers to financial statements.
Well, I have the same question on F, F three, and, so, it's all in how we're defining what a financial statement is, because in F three, we paid $200,000 based on progress reports and invoices that were sent to us, but we didn't consider that as a financial statement of any sort. Okay. So then, and, the other one is F nine, city disagrees with the finding, which I understand, because the City of Palm Springs, they're saying, "Our inadequate oversight resulted in loss of over $700,000." And we disagree with that. Because DAP was able to complete the pilot program, the city is unable to recognize a reconcile a specific amount of loss. Don't we know how much money we ended going to DAP?
How much money went to DAP?
How much money was left from Queer Works that went to DAP?
We do have that number at the end of the, at the end of the program?
So our, to, to me, our loss is the $700,000 less the amount of money that ended up in DAP's hands.
I think we, I was Christopher Money, Director of Finance and Treasurer for the city. I think we, we heard it was approximately $30,000 that was left over, but I, we could never confirm that amount.
And just to clarify, we don't know what was actually spent legitimately, because we didn't get financial statements.
Correct. We, we weren't able to get sufficient information to conduct an audit. Asked it numerous times, and then we basically were essentially shut down. But we didn't receive enough information to be able to track payments that were made, or track dollars that the program were to use, and so we, we can't definitively say how much was lost.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions or comments? Councilmember Ready?
Yes, thank you. So, I, I, I think, obviously, you addressed the, the findings and, and the, the recommendations. Now, I, I wasn't he, here when this occurred, and, and I didn't write this, so I guess I, I want to focus more on the going forward part, on the recommendations. I think that's, would be most appropriate for me, but, but you did address, obviously, in the, in the, in the recommendations that you've agreed with, obviously, that, you know, the lump sums and all that stuff i- is covered. But, but I think the one thing that I would like to, to note and request is, you know, it occurs to me, obviously, there's the, looking at the, the larger issue going forward here, and I would like to use the example of, of the investment committee. You know, state law requires, you know, I think it's four times a year, the city manager, finance director, and the mayor sit down, and they, you have to review our investment policies. And, and then that's reported out, the, the city council. So I, I think, you know, when we look at all the policies and programs that the city has, not just in financial, just across the city, there's a lot of them that are old, some of them that are used more than others, some of them are more formal, some are informal. Many of them are practices that have not been formalized into policies, and, you know, none of that's a problem until it is, like here. So, I, I think what I would like to recommend, recommend going forward, and this would be for the city manager, obviously not for us to consider tonight, but for the city manager to come back with a, a model of how it could work, and we could vote on it then, of like the investment committee, where it'd be a policy review committee. And it wouldn't have to be four times a year, let's just say two times a year, the city manager, the city attorney, and two members of council would meet to have this discussion on the overall policies of the city. And from that, we, we kind of get a sense of what's, needs to be updated, what's old, what's new, what's not working, what's not best practices. And then, obviously, as part of that, the range of policies would come to council, it was receive and file, so we can see what those are. Now, obviously, that's not a yearly thing. It may be, some policies may need to be reviewed by council every couple of years, some every five years, depending on that. But again, we would have a formal process. Now, none of that prohibits the city manager from bringing policy changes anytime that, that he or she feels it's important, but at least we would be able to formalize a, a policy review committee to have that as a process. And I think if that one thing comes out of this report, it might make sense going forward as we look at all of our policies. So, I guess that's a request for the city manager to at least bring back for a discussion item, what that scheme, schemata would look like.
You asking for every policy?
Well, ultimately, ultimately, it's, it's every policy. But, but, but what, what does that mean, obviously? There's, there's a universe of policies that we know are the more important ones, you know, of the financial, everything from how we collect TOT to how we do grants, okay? And some of them, it, it's good for council, doesn't know what most of them are, because we don't have exposure to them until it's on actually an agenda item of some sort. But it, it, this kind of review process gives us all an idea of when things should be updated, and, well, maybe if something's missing. Do we have a policy on? Maybe we don't, or not enough, and then we can ask that to be agendized. But it's that kind of review process that, that comes to council a couple of times a year, that, that less, in essence, we can see the universe of policies to see what might be important. Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea.
I mean, I think it's good, but I think it's sort of generally how we operate. We, everything in here, there's a lot of policies, or we can ask for policies to come up. So you're saying you want some more to come from staff that may need review?
Well, right, if, but we, but let's just say there's, there's 5,000 policies the city has. We have very little exposure to any of them. How do we know certain things are, are good policies, or bad policies, or need to be reviewed? You know, you just take your records retention. Is it time to update that? We, we have many policies on the books that are so outdated, we don't even enforce anymore. We have some on the books that we aren't enforcing. It's just sort of a, a formalizing a review process periodically, that council has a better understanding of what policies are there. And it gives us the opportunity to say, if we see something, well, well, wait, what about this? Maybe we should have a policy on that. Now, this does not preclude us from raising those issues anytime at any meeting, but, but this is a more formalized process for the more mundane things we wouldn't see.
Yeah.
Mr. City Manager, is that something department heads would bring to you, or?
Yeah, maybe just a couple of comments on Councilman Ready's point. Obviously, you know, under our form of government, council establishes policies for how the city is run, and it's our job to carry out those policies and directions that are established by the council. Now, council, I think all the council members are familiar, there are thousands of policies among all of our departments. Just think of every department, in our police department, hundreds and hundreds of policies. The airport, hundreds and hundreds, thousands of policies. So, you know, and those policies are what guides them in their day-to-day activities. And as council members will remember, you know, when we had to expose the corruption that we found in this Queer Works situation last year, the staff, we came forward, I think our speaker even, you know, commanded staff for coming forward, she had some questions about how we've answered some of these reports, but when we, when this report came forward, we came forward very clearly and said mistakes were made. We outlined a whole series of new policies that we had to put into place, such as no more lump sums of giving out grants to things, auditing, checking, reporting back, all of those sort of things. So that was a great example of a whole new set of policies that, that staff put into place, and we're now implementing with the approval of city council. So, so I think it's a great idea to review those, but there's thousands and thousands of them, so I think it would really require some thinking about, how do we maybe get a little more focused, a little more strategic with them? You referenced, there's financial policies, there's law enforcement, there's fire safety policies. We can go through every department we have, and they're, they have lots and lots of, of policies that guide, like I said, that guide the way they think. So, I think the first step is to figure out the, the, I, I totally am comfortable and agree with some of your thinking about this. I'm just trying to figure out how to...
Right, and that's why I would like you to come back with a proposal. Because obviously, we're not gonna look at all the policies.
Yeah.
There's, there's a, a, a path to the ones that are germane, to the ones we're dealing with. And, and, and I only say that because this, what's in this report is so significant that I think institutionalizing something going forward as a policy, I mean, policy is the most important thing we do as a council, yet we don't have any formal subcommittee on policy. So, I, I just like, you can consider it, and maybe bring back to council what that could look like. Obviously, we can decide one way or the other, and what it should or should not be, but I think coming out from, from what we see here, this is certainly a good path that we should be on as a city.
And I, I think it would be easy to narrow down, like, address the, the top four cost centers, you know, one year. Address the top six revenue line items another year. So I think, you know, we, it's not a, it's not a massive undertaking, but Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I agree so much with what my colleagues are saying here, that we need to make sure that the policies that we have in place are appropriate, are up to date, are reviewed, that there's a process for reviewing it. I do think it's important to delegate some, some of the expertise that each of our department heads have to be able to do that review. You know, I don't work in law enforcement. I don't, it would not be appropriate for me to look at all law enforcement policies. We should, I, I think there's a level of oversight, and there's also delegation to the respective department expertise. And so, I do think I want to make sure that we, the, the implementation of our policies, that staff's role, that we're very clear in our delineation of directing policy, understanding when they're being reviewed and updated. You know, we can do a receive and file, but I do think it's important to make sure that we're respecting the boundary of staff's role versus policy, versus council's role on trusting and overseeing the city manager's role on what that looks like. So, I just want to kind of offer that to you, Mr. Stiles, so that way, when you kind of come back, there's kind of a balance, a little bit, hopefully, as to, again, what are the, maybe the most appropriate ones that come back to council, what that timeline looks like. But I, I do think that we need to make sure that this is in line with the overall oversight of the roles that we are most responsible for, which is our city manager and our city attorney.
And, 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 Mr. Mayor, I think maybe the, not to belabor, but I think we can bring back something for council to consider. What I'd like to do is maybe sit down, talk to the executive staff, sit down with department directors, get their advice on what they're thinking, and try and accomplish some of the goals that Councilmember Ready and Mayor Protem Soto are both alliterating, and it may be coming back with something that may put some, put some, I, I don't know, guidelines around what we're, what we're talking about.
And, and, and I appreciate the comments, city manager, you made about, you know, as this issue first came forward. We were very forthcoming. Council was very open and, and asking questions of staff, and staff was very forthcoming. And, and we shared with the community what we were learning, as we were learning discoveries within City Hall. And, and I think we want to continue going down that path, and, and having that relationship with the community. And my comments, my comments tonight are all centered on, I, I feel we could have maintained that sense of responsibility to the community and the response we gave to the community a little stronger in our response here, in, 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 in the response in these questions. Councilmember Bernstein?
I just, I mean, I, I, as the city manager said, mistakes were made, and I realize in some of the responses in the grand jury, people may want more elaborated responses. I mean, I think, as Councilmember Ready said, the real, the crux of the matter is what we, the recommendations that we're moving forward is. Basically, we're moving forward with all of them, and I've already started all of them, other, and the only one that we slightly didn't implement was because we have figured out another way to do it. And I think that's really the best response to this, is how we can do it going forward, because mistakes were made, and it really is unfortunate, but how we have dealt with it, how the city manager and our staff dealt with the response, I think, you know, shows that we are committed to never letting this, or preventing this happening. So, thank you.
Okay, do we have a, a motion on this item, one X? And is that motion to accept staff recommendation? Okay, very good, thank you. We have some comments on item one G and W. Oh my God, G is, G is me. Goodness. Hopefully, somebody can figure out who one W is. So, one G, I just wanted to, I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, our, our sustainability efforts and the goals that councils before us have had, and, and our desire to increase our electric fleet. Seems like when we come to council sometimes, and we keep buying vehicles, and... Seems like when we come to council sometimes, and we keep buying vehicles, and, and they keep being, we report that they're gas, that gas vehicles are diesel fuel. It's, it's very nice to celebrate when we get a fleet of electric trucks. And, and the fact that we're buying F-150s is, is something to celebrate. And I, I applaud staff's commitment to bring these electric vehicles in whenever we possibly can, and, and understanding we have some challenges with our electrical, our abilities to put chargers up within city buildings. And, but we will keep forging forward, and it takes that commitment to remain focused, you know, on, you know, on, on this goal. And we'll continue, I'm confident, to get electric vehicles added to our fleet. So, thank you on that. Councilmember Bernstein.
I could just second that, and also add, these are airport vehicles, and the airport is now installing 80 electric chargers, which will make us the most, most electric chargers in an airport in the region, other than LA and San Diego. So it's really, I second your comments.
Although, could I ask a question? If you can answer this now, how is that going to work at the airport? Someone who goes on a flight is going to be able to leave their car in a charger? I'm, I'm really mystified by that.
I think if you're in a waiting lot, you come in to pick somebody up, you're there for a short time.
Yeah, it, it, well, it, it could be for our own vehicles, but it could be for people going to the restaurant to visit, short-term.
So it's for short-term, because people are just coming there to pick someone up? Or is it for open to the public?
Or, or going to some of the food vendors there?
It's in Lot B.
They can't get in security, though.
I believe it's in Lot B, so they would have to pay for parking.
So you have to pay for parking to leave the charge? Really? Okay, well, there's a policy to review.
All right.
Let's start with that one.
Since that wasn't part of the item. Yeah, so, next we've got item three A, which is designation of an alternate appointee for the Sunline Transit Agency, JPR Board of Direct, JPA Board of Directors. Do we need a staff report on this, or are we just going to appoint? Councilmember Garner.
So I think this, this was just an error, because I'm the, the Sunline appointee, and I believe at that meeting, we discussed Councilmember Ready being the alternate. So I think that probably just got missed somewhere. But as long as you still want to be the alternate, Councilmember Ready, I would nominate you to do so.
If you're okay with being your alternate?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, motion on the floor to appoint Councilmember Ready as the alternate. Do we have a second?
There we go.
Mayor Protem, second, thank you. All right, moving on to item three B, which is an appeal by the Carnegie Red Trust owners and appellants of an action of the Architectural Advisory Committee denying the appeal of certain conditions of approval related to the approval of Director of Planning Services for the case AR-20240046. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Ken Lyon, I'm the principal city planner here with the city. I also have with me Tony Ritterer, who is our Assistant Planning Director. And I believe somewhere in the audience, we also have our Director of Engineering, Joel Montalvo. The proposed project that is the subject of this appeal is a construction of a 750-square-foot building addition to an existing non-conforming former gas station canopy located 1100 South Palm Canyon Drive, corner of Palo Verde Drive. Are the images up here?
No, we don't have anything yet.
Oh, that's because I don't have the pusher.
I'm glad it's not me not firing on all cylinders tonight. And I have company, our, our computer systems. There we go.
Wonderful, thank you. Thank you, IT. So yes, this is a construction of a 750-square-foot building addition to an existing non-conforming former gas station canopy. On this image, you can see the site there on the lower left. In the middle, which is a little hard to see on these screens, is the site plan that came in at that time, and some elevations of the proposed building.
Our screens are not showing the presentation. Could we have IT do this, fix that, please?
IT, there you go. They should be on.
There we go, thank you.
Everybody got it?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, sorry about that. So on page two of your presentation, the issues. This existing gas station canopy encroaches into the South Palm Canyon right-of-way, requiring an encroachment permit the applicant does not want to provide. The proposed addition significantly disrupts the onsite vehicular circulation and access to parking on the property. The project design fails to provide a site plan that shows, one, adequate parking for all uses and buildings on the parcel; two, a parking lot design that meets the minimum design requirements of the city's off-street parking code; three, a design for the trash enclosure for the parcel that meets the minimum city code requirements; four, compliance with the city, state, and federal regulations on stormwater, safe vehicular access control, and so on, as outlined in the engineering conditions of approval that were part of this staff-level approval. The applicant's inconsistent stated uses, i.e., at one point, it was a display building, another time, it was submitted as a storage building, another time, personal storage, and in another exhibit, a new structure. For the proposed building, it is one which has large expanses of glass on three street frontages, raising concern about visual nuisance of the storage, of using storage in an almost-all-glass building, or changes in byright uses that could exacerbate the limited onsite parking. A little background. On July 30th, 2024, the Planning Director approved the application for this project with conditions intended to resolve the issues and non-compliant aspects of the project. On Octo, excuse me, on August 13th, 2024, the applicant appealed the director's approval to the Architectural Review Committee, demanding the removal of most of the conditions of approval. On March 17th, 2025, the ARC voted unanimously to deny the appeal and uphold the decision of the Planning Director. And on March 31st of this year, the applicant appealed the decision of the ARC to you, which is why we're here tonight. Efforts to resolve. We've been working with this applicant, obviously, for quite some time. Engineering, the engineering department has offered deferral to covenant of a number of their required conditions of approval. Two, concessions were offered within the authority of what the Planning Director may offer, including waiving of the parking, the requirement for parking lot lighting, reducing the number of required off-street parking spaces, reduce the minimum width dimension of individual parking sta, spaces, waived the requirement for shade over the parking lot, waived the requirement for landscape screening of the parking lot, waived the requirement for providing bicycle parking, waived the distance and required screening between parking and the abutting residential uses. Staff gave detailed information to the applicant's architect on November 27th of last year on the minimum requirements to bring the proposed site design into compliance with the parking code. Written summary of that meeting is in your packet. The city attorney and city staff met and corresponded multiple times with the applicant's attorney, yet were unable to reach a resolution and agreement prior to this hearing. Our staff recommendation is to deny the appeal and uphold the original action of the Planning Director of July 30th, 2024, approving the project with all conditions intact. We are all here to answer any questions you may have, and that completes my summary. Thank you very much.
Mayor and council, I'd also point out that Jim Priest from the city attorney's office, he's been advising the planning commission and planning staff since about 2018, well before I got here. He's available by Zoom.
When does the appellant get to talk?
That would normally be after the questions of staff, yes.
Okay. Council, do we have any questions of staff? Go ahead, Mr. Councilmember Ready.
Thank you. Before my comments, I just want to note that, as this is in my district, I had, in council's direction, met with the Planning Director and the city attorney, Mr. Priest, along with the applicant. So I just want to let, we've had a couple of meetings to see if we could resolve that. So I just wanted to just make sure everyone was aware that we, I was a part of a couple of those meetings. So my, my question's here, so what was, it's a little confusing, and, and I know staff has done all the things they need to do here, and are required to be doing. One thing, if you could help to clarify, there were some 40-some requirements, I think there was about 20 that are outstanding that they weren't agreed to. But could you help me understand, what is still left that is not agreed to in, in staff's, in your estimation? I know it was the encroachment, but, but yet, the applicant had agreed to that at one point, and I'm sure they'll address that when they speak. But aside from that, what, what is left? Because I, I know the parking was reduced, is it just the parking and the curb, or the parking curb and drainage? So what, what's left? What's still outstanding?
I'll speak to those that I can, that are from a planning perspective, and then I'm going to have Joel Montalvo speak to more of the detail on the engineering aspects. There are two planning department conditions of approval on this project. One is to provide us with a code-conforming parking lot site plan. There have been many different site plans put forth on this project by the project applicant. To date, none of them fully conform to our zoning code, Chapter 9306, which is the parking ordinance, which provides the design standards for those. So we have gone through many different iterations, we have had many different proposals put forth. The parking design that we currently have, the last one received, plus the one that is the subject of the approval, does not conform as it's drawn. We need an actual site plan that is drawn, usually they are drawn by a civil engineer, showing the dimensions, showing the locations of curbs, showing all of those things relative to the existing.
Right, so, so we saw that in our meetings with the Planning Director that were provided. And so we were going through those, and the Planning Director had, had chosen to, you know, reduce the number of parking. So I think it was, was it just the configuration? Is that what's left?
Configuration, as well as a, a properly dimensioned and designed site plan. The site plan that we have seen, you have seen, is, is not what we would normally see. We need to see something that has the dimensions correct.
Well, is it what went off, like, 10 inches, 3 feet? What, what's?
We can't tell. There are some parts of this site plan that are simply not dimensioned. There are other parts of the design of this parking, parking lot, and of any parking lot, that requires curb and gutter. And where there isn't a collection of stormwater to divert it to somewhere, it's simply a straight curb. And if there is an area of water drainage across the parking lot area, that does require a flat gutter.
Right, and so I know that they did do the, the drainage study, and that was submitted, we discussed it at our meeting with the Planning Director, and it did not, that seemed to be, it approved it, that it was okay at that point?
There has been a study, but we do not know the extent of the area that they're proposing to repave, as an example. So we're willing and ready to work with this applicant to come up with a code-compliant design of this parking lot that works, but we have not gotten that yet to date. In terms of the second planning condition of approval for storage, or for the dumpster enclosure, they're proposing a chain-link enclosure with some type of slats in order to enclose it. The code requires a masonry structure or other durable material, and there needs to be a clear pathway from that trash enclosure out to the street, so that the rolling carts can be brought out for the Palm Springs disposal to pick them up. A chain-link enclosure with some type of wooden slat is not a durable enclosure. The enclosure, as it was designed, showed two containers of some kind of some dimension. Our code requires orga, as you know, as a citizen and resident here, organics, trash, and recycling. There are three. There is no evidence that they have accommodated, designed an enclosure that will accommodate three carts. Some of these things are really simple, but we have not yet been able to get those designs forwarded to us that are truly meeting the design standards, which are relatively straightforward, in order to say, that meets the design. In terms of the engineering conditions of approval, Joel, could you, do you want to step up and just explain the ones that are still outstanding, or?
Yeah, from the, good evening, Mayor, City Councilor, Joel Montalvo. So from, from the perspective of the engineering department, there are several conditions that have been disputed, and one of them is the right-of-way dedication on, on, on South Palm Canyon Drive. We're requiring 10-foot additional dedication, the applicant doesn't feel that. Other conditions that are typical, typically applied to all commercial developments are, you know, improvements to the streets, you know, such as curb ramps, or handicap-accessible walkways, where area where there's no driveways, or an existing driveway that is no longer going to be used, raised curb. So there's straightforward conditions, and for the most part, engineering has deferred the conditions that aren't applicable, like widening the street. If it's not appropriate, we deferred it. So many of the conditions that we apply are deferred based on what's needed in the area. General, that's kind of what's being disputed here.
Other questions from council? Councilmember Bernstein.
So, just to clarify, you've said that they haven't said they use, you know, storage, merchandise display, personal storage box. Can you explain how some of those different uses could potentially change the requirements?
Yes. Our parking ordinance is based on providing off-street parking for all uses and all buildings. There are three buildings on this site. The one that is, the one that is proposed, the 715 square feet of personal storage, as far as we know. That requires a minimum of six parking spaces by itself. We also have an existing building that was a former gas station. I don't have the square footage in front of me, but it's about 1,200 square foot, if I'm not mistaken. There's a third building that at one time had been used as a single-family residence. That building, based on its square footage, whether it is a, used as a residence or not, has a parking requirement. If it's used as a single-family home, the requirement is for two off-street parking spaces. But if that residence is going to be used as a medical office, there are many more spaces required. I explained this in the meeting that I had with the applicant's architect, and at that time, I said, here are the basic kinds of uses. The, the applicant has talked about it being a display building. He apparently has some type of a design business. Design studios and things like that also have parking requirements for the off-street parking areas. At this point, we only have six. This is a C1 zone. There are many, many, many byright uses that could go into this building that have higher parking demands or requirements than a storage building. We've tried to tell them to maximize the number that they could put in, because they should have as much flexibility as they can to use their building to the maximum extent possible. But with only six spaces, when that user comes in to get their business license, we can't verify that there's enough parking for that next use or a change in use. That's part of the issue in terms of, how's the building used?
But if they don't have enough parking for the next use or the change of use, but they have enough parking for whatever they want it now, I mean, they could do that, it just would mean they can never change the use.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear you.
You said you want to. You said you want to maximize the number of parking if there's a change of use or the next use.
Okay.
But if they're doing simply a storage unit, that has a minimum number of requirements. So really, they just have to meet the minimum for that?
For each building.
For each building?
They've so far provided parking for the building that they're proposing to build, not for the other two existing buildings on the site.
Okay.
And because the way that the building has been proposed, which is under what was an old gas station, you know, where you fuel your car, all of the onsite vehicular circulation has been severely interrupted. You can't get from one part of the current existing paved area to the other part. And one of the parts that they're proposing for parking takes access off of Palm Canyon Drive. The area that's left over after this building is built does not provide enough turning around or area to turn the vehicle around and move forward into Palm Canyon Drive. That's not just an option, that's an ordinance requirement. On major and secondary thoroughfares, the parking lot must be designed, or a driveway must be designed, so that the vehicle can turn around on the property and move out into the travelway forward. And the risk here with the way that the applicant's designer has proposed is there's three parking spaces. They take access from Palm Canyon. The curb cut is very wide, and there's nothing there that would really incentivize a person. If you just want to get out of that parking space, you, there's a very, it's very easy for you to simply back out into Palm Canyon Drive, which is not safe. So part of what comes through on these various conditions and design standards, which have been in place for decades, is safety. We're looking at safety, both for the people that come to this site, as well as people traveling past this site. So those are the kinds of things that we've been trying to emphasize. In addition, most recently, the applicant explained, we had, you know, we're trying to figure out how to work with him on this, the existing building that used to be a service garage has three garage doors. In one of the most recent parking solutions, they've correctly shown a continuous curb, a continuous six-inch curb across the front, or the nose end, of their proposed parking spaces. That effectively eliminates the ability to drive a car into one of those garage spaces, which in a very recent correspondence that came in on September 3rd, was a requirement. Now, we have never heard what he plans on doing with that old building that used to be a service station, but if it's something that he's intending to be able to drive a car in to those one or two or three spaces, then putting parking in front of those doors with a continuous six-inch curb, unless you have an SUV and you're planning on jumping over that curb, you can't get into those garage spaces. It's those kinds of things that we've been trying to explain to him, both in terms of the safety of egress onto the public right-of-way, as well as movement on the site, that there needs to be additional design done here that meets our minimum standards.
Okay, and similarly, say, I mean, they say it could be a three, a glass building under the canopy, glass on three sides, which would seem like a showroom, which is seems like the kind of building that someone's going to drive up to and stop and look, potentially. I mean, it would be sort of trying to get their attention. So did they ask any of these questions prior to purchasing the property?
Did they what, I'm sorry?
Ask any questions about the process or the planning prior to purchasing the property?
I'm not aware of any. That doesn't mean that they didn't call the planning department and ask, but we have no record of any call at the time that he was considering purchasing the property.
Not that they don't have to?
No, no.
Okay, and just, when you say the canopy is non-conforming, and so that is sort of grandfathered, they don't have to change the canopy, but if they're building under it, it has other requirements, is that correct?
When you look in the non-conforming section of the zoning code, it talks to things that are existing non-conforming. And if you have a situation of a building or a structure that's existing and non-conforming in some way, that non-conforming condition may continue until you want to alter or modify that, the buildings on that site. And then that structure, which is non-conforming, must be brought up to current design standards, and typically it requires that decision to be made by the planning commission. So another thing that we tried to do in order to help this applicant move this along expeditiously was to try to process this as much as we could at a staff level, and that's one of those things that we were not able to resolve either with him.
Okay, and then also, you gave that list of conditions that you've waived. Have you waived those permanently or depending on use, or are there some that you've waived depending on use?
That's me. The ones, most of those that are being deferred are engineering conditions.
Yeah, so the engineering conditions would not be deferred on use. The original conditions that were deferred were based on what we saw on either street, Palm Canyon and Beatty.
Okay.
They're not based on the use. We defer on use, we defer on what's required of the site.
Okay, and do you think you've given as much leeway as you can under our current ordinances and requirements?
From an engineer perspective?
Yes.
I think we have.
I mean, you, Ken's already answered. Okay, thank you. Those are my questions for now.
Other questions? Okay, we have an opportunity for the appellant to speak. And did we confirm it's five minutes, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you for being here. You, you've got five minutes.
Well, we wanted to thank all of you for your time this evening. Thank you very much. My name is Eve Brockman. I am counsel for Mr. Prainer, who's also my Vanna White this evening, as you can see. We have a before shot for you. This is why we are here, we are trying to build this. And we have the before and after. So is this the before?
This is the before.
Yeah, that's what it looks like now. I wanted to note to you that in 2021, 2022, Mr. Prainer already developed the prior gas station building. This is to add an enclosure underneath the existing canopy. The enclosure would not touch the canopy, contrary to what the staff report says. It would not draw electricity from the canopy, it would simply be sitting underneath the canopy. The use has always been personal business storage. There isn't a code section that specifically states that, so originally there was a clerical error that said it was for display. The reason for the glass walls on the building, oh, let's see, the after, this is what we're trying to build. Oh, this is what we're trying to build. That's what it would look like. And so that would be personal business storage, and, you know, we, starting from the beginning, there's just a number of things, the record's enormous, five minutes isn't very long, but I'll do my best. We have actually a number of binders with materials that are in the record that I was hoping, I don't have a PowerPoint presentation because I wasn't sure what we're allowed to do up here, but if you've got your binders, I can walk you through how we got here. So this isn't a problem that the city council started, obviously, but it is one that you can solve today. We are appealing all of the conditions listed in the March 2025 appeal that we submitted. This appeal was previously before the ARC, as mentioned. We were not allowed to present anything. I was in trial at the time, I requested a continuance of that hearing, and that request was denied, so neither Mr. Prainer nor I were able to be at the ARC hearing. So really, this is kind of the first time somebody has heard our side of the story. The city has asked you to, to deny our appeal of all the conditions, and so that is essentially what would go to Superior Court if you don't grant our appeal today. But we have submitted, and it's in the fold of your binder, we have submitted a proposed resolution that I think, I drafted that, and I think it adequately reflects the many meetings and discussions that we have had with city staff and engineering about how to work all of this out. There are really just a few points that are sticking points at this time. Trash enclosures isn't on the list. It's not even on the list of things we're opposing. We've agreed to do the trash enclosure, so I don't know why that's being constantly brought up, and I will walk you through it to the degree time allows, but the proposed resolution that I provided, it's in the materials, it's in the fold of your binder, does walk through each of the conditions that have been resolved with city staff and the very few conditions that are remaining. Originally, if you look at Exhibit F, which is in this binder, you will see that initially, Mr. Prainer submitted his request for approval of his original design for this building, and it was granted on August 22nd. No conditions, just granted, just like the 2021 building that he did on this very same property. No additional conditions were imposed. In Exhibit G, you can see on the 29th, he paid for his building permits, and then you'll see on the 27th, he received a, an email from Mr. Bruno at the city indicating that the city had changed its mind, they were revoking the approval because of one reason and one reason alone, which is that the city required Mr. Prainer to sign an easement to sign over right-of-way for a ten-foot strip of property along South Palm Canyon Road, the most valuable portion of his property, in exchange for granting of his permits. Now, we have draft, we have briefed that issue at length. That is actually at page, let's see, I think, oh, it's page 40 of the record. It's Exhibit 1 to our March original appeal that was submitted. Under a case called City of Paris v. Stamper, which cites a number of Supreme Court cases, the city is not entitled to just take a ten-foot strip of land in exchange for permits. There has to be an adequate nexus. I'm out of time, it seems. I would like to continue and walk you through, there was quite a lot of time given to questions for the other side. There's a lot more that I could demonstrate to you, but I will respect your time limit.
Yeah, it would have been beneficial if I could have had this prior to the meeting to study it, so.
It's submitted prior to the meeting, Mayor. It is in the record. I just simply provided it similar to like a PowerPoint, but, you know, I'm a little low-tech.
Okay, I didn't understand that this is the same as what's in the staff report.
It is not in the staff report. It is, what is in the staff report, we take issue with a lot of what is stated in the staff report. That's in the record on appeal, and that is in the materials that should have been provided to all of the city council.
It was a supplemental, it was in the supplemental that was sent from the clerk.
Got it, thank you. Any questions? Yes, go ahead.
So could you tell me, so we can try and understand, what exactly, in your estimation, are the outstanding issues? You said it's not the trash, but what is outstanding?
Right, so if you could please take a look at our proposed resolution, it really does walk through that.
Mayor, can you give me that?
What is the proposed resolution?
Is that, is that your copy?
That's in the flap of your binder. I also have additional copies, if it's helpful for me to just pass it out to you. Here you go.
Well, no, you need a copy.
Sorry.
Oh, here it is. Thank you, okay. So what is, I've got it here. So what is outstanding, just so we can try and understand this? Because it's, there's a lot here. The specifics of what's outstanding, not agreed to.
Okay, so if you look at, and by the way, if you look at, don't take it from me, there's a letter from Chris Hadwin, and that is Exhibit A in your binder, and he provided essentially a color-coded list of what we had worked out. That's all in green, most of it's green. And what remained outstanding, which is what's in yellow on Exhibit A to, within the binder that I provided to you, again, it's all in the record, but now it's in front of you in hard copy.
Okay, so the ones in yellow is what you're saying are the ones not agreed to?
Right, well, so, but not necessarily. So city staff, just looking at this, city staff has agreed to defer Engineering 1, which is the off-site improvement covenant, Engineering 3, which is the additional ten-foot right-of-way on South Palm Canyon. Again, we had, you know, our, I had discussed it at length with Mr. Priest, that we don't believe the city's entitled to that right-of-way.
Right, so, but I thought you'd agreed that you would defer it.
If we change the use at a different time, if we change the use to one that would burden traffic on South Palm Canyon, then, you know, the easement could be required, but given the current use, there is not a sufficient nexus for the city to require it. Does that make sense?
Well, I thought, but I thought you would, you'd agree to the easement, because any, anything's going to require that, and since the city's never going to expand that road, it's a moot point, and I thought that's why you would agree to do it, but you're saying you have not?
The city, city staff had agreed to waive the right-of-way easement.
The covenant?
To defer it.
Defer the covenant?
Yes, it's an easement allowing the city.
Which basically says if we ever widen the road, we would take a portion of your thing, and they wouldn't do that anyway. So, but, so you're saying you're not agreeing to that?
We're not agreeing, this, this burdens his property, reduces the value of the property.
I understand that you're presenting, I'm just trying to understand what's outstanding. So that one's outstanding?
No, it's not outstanding. So our last conversation was the city had agreed that, that that requirement would be deferred to another time in the future when it was triggered by a change in use. So Mr. Prainer, so we have agreed that...
Joel, is that, is that correct? Different use? Yeah, it's on.
During negotiations, we were, I think it was, it's difficult to do, but we were trying to concede that maybe we could not take the right-of-way immediately, but it could be triggered if they ever apply for any different type of use of the building.
Oh, I see, okay, so you did make that.
It was kind of...
I got, that's, okay.
But it never really was agreed upon, it never made it anywhere, so.
Right, so are they agreeing to it? Or you're not?
Our understanding, based on our conversations, was that the city staff would work this out with Mr. Prainer by agreeing he does not need to sign an easement for a right-of-way at this time. If the use, I believe that my friend has adequately also agreed and explained that, at a time in the future, if the use changes such that it, the right-of-way would be required, then we would revisit that, that in the exchange for approval of a different use, other than personal business storage, that Mr. Prainer would have to sign that easement, but that for current situation, current proposed use that would not be required at this time, it's deferred.
Okay.
Okay, so then, moving on to Engineering 6 through 11, by the way, I'm on page two of this proposed resolution, various off-site improvements.
So those are green, so those mean those are agreed to? That's not an issue tonight?
So...
You're looking at this, not Exhibit A, correct?
Right, I'm looking at this.
Okay.
So the city has agreed to defer those conditions, that's why they're agreeing on Mr. Hadwin's letter.
Okay.
Okay. Owner and city staff now agree that Engineering 18, sanitary facilities, is not applicable given that the project doesn't have any bathroom, so that's now moot. With regard to Engineering 19 through 23, the owner has agreed to comply with these conditions to the degree they're applicable. So Engineering 19 through 23, Mr. Prainer agrees he will comply with those to the degree applicable, many of them are not applicable, but he would comply to the degree they are. The owner has submitted a drainage plan by Emir Engineering, and that's Exhibit B in what you see in your binder. The drainage, Emir Engineering has approved that he will alter the height of some of the asphalt, and that that will resolve any engineering issues. And that should resolve Engineering 24 to 25. We obtained that letter and that plan in, as a result of a request from Mr. Hadwin to do so, and we thought that that had resolved Engineering 24 to 25. The owner also agrees to comply with Engineering 26 to 29, and Engineering 30 to 32, to the degree those are applicable, so, so those should be fine. Whereas the following conditions remain unresolved, Engineering 2 and 4, the encroachment permit. The city insists that Mr. Prainer has to pay for an encroachment permit for a building that does not encroach into anything. He is not changing the overhang or the canopy, so it should remain legal non-conforming. He's not changing it any more than he changed it when he improved the other building on the property. Engineering 5 and 14 is the driveway and turnaround on South Palm Canyon Drive. We have obtained a parking plan from Full Motor Engineering. They work in Palm Springs, they're very well-respected. It shows there is plenty of room for a hammerhead turnaround, if you want to show where that is.
Basically, the three spaces are here, and discussing with him, he said the city should know what a hammerhead turn is, which means the car backs here. which means the car backs here. It's not on the sidewalk. It's still on the property, backs into here, and then can pull out forward. All three of these spaces have that ability to do that. So, this is not an issue with anybody backing onto Palm Canyon. It's just not a reality. They can turn, and they can swing into here, and then pull out, all three of these spaces.
So, you're saying that they can back out without backing onto Palm Canyon?
Correct, that is correct. It's called a hammerhead turn.
But that's not what the engineering or staff, you believe?
Well, no, they're saying that according to this, you have to back straight out into Palm Canyon, which just isn't true.
So, could I ask? So, staff, the Fomotor that he's... Fomotor was not correct? Is that the dispute with his parking study?
The drawing that's there on the Fomotor sketch or diagram doesn't show an actual hammerhead. It shows the three parking spaces that are proposed in front of the garage doors. It does not show the dimensions or even the diagram. If you have a six-foot-wide car, you need to demonstrate on a hammerhead that that width of a vehicle can move into this area and then move into this area. On one of the diagrams in your packet, there's a couple of quickly drawn arrows trying to imply that's enough. But we can't base a hammerhead design approval on a sketch with some arrows on it. We need dimensions to prove that a standard vehicle can actually perform that three-way turn.
And Fomotor didn't provide that?
The sketch that Mr. Lyon has referred to, that's Exhibit D in your package, it was simply a sketch to demonstrate what you can see by looking at the Fomotor diagram. And I know no one here, well, I don't know. Maybe you are. I'm not an engineer. But we did pay and retain an experienced engineering company to prepare a parking diagram.
So, Exhibit D is Fomotor's?
No, Exhibit D was just our... Mr. Prainer's, actually. Mr. Prainer is a licensed contractor, and he just prepared this sketch to show where the hammerhead turnaround is located. He's a V, the Fomotor parking plan. We weren't told in advance that hammerhead turnaround needed to be demonstrated on the Fomotor diagram. We retained Fomotor to provide the parking plan at the request of Mr. Hadwin, at the request of city staff. And so, this is just yet another example of the shifting requirements that we've had to deal with and that we have been trying to deal with. Case in point, originally, there weren't any conditions at all. The only issue we had was the right-of-way. In July of last year, we got a letter of approval with 40 conditions in it that we had never seen before. So, this is another example. We're just, we did the Fomotor engineering diagram of the parking plan in exchange, sorry, in answer to Mr. ...
Right, so I was just trying to understand what is left outstanding that is not agreed to?
Yeah.
And so...
So, in our view, the Fomotor parking diagram should resolve Engineering 5 and 14. This is a code-compliant parking plan. With regard, again, to the sketch, it was just to demonstrate that hammerhead turnaround, there's plenty of room for that on this Fomotor diagram. Engineering 12 and 13, the owner agrees that all broken or damaged asphalt and concrete on site will be repaired, but he requests that the city grant, he has applied for a facade improvement program to contribute to that cost. Mr. Prainer, the original cost for this development was $30,000. That was the original budget. He's now spent $150,000 in consulting and legal fees trying to get this approved.
So, what you're saying is you'd agree to this repair if you can get the improvement?
That's not going to happen. What's next?
Engineering 15, the owner contends that the requirement to construct an eight-foot sidewalk behind the curb along the entire... Perhaps you could show where that is, Mr. Prainer. So, the city wants us to construct a curb along this entire frontage of Palo Verde Avenue, and it's overly burdensome given the scope of this project. It's not in keeping with neighborhood conditions because the adjacent residential neighborhood doesn't have any sidewalks.
So, there's no curb there now? It's all driveway?
Correct.
It was just driveway from the gas station?
Correct.
Okay.
And as to Engineering 16 and 17, the owner agrees to repair or replace any damaged asphalt or concrete on site as needed, and he'll properly repair any off-site damage caused by his project's construction activities. But he doesn't agree to off-site improvements simply to build a storage building, 700-square-foot storage building on his property. So, if you look at this proposed resolution, it walks through everything that has been resolved through our discussions with city staff and the few outstanding remaining things that we believe it would be reasonable for the city council to approve the solution that we've proposed here.
So, Mayor, may?
Yeah.
So, I guess there's a couple of issues at play here for me. One is, obviously, this was a... This is a site that it's been, you know, very much a nuisance, derelict site for over 20 years. It's been vacant, an old gas station. There's been no, certainly no development there. It's been an eyesore. So, obviously, the city has a real policy interest in getting this remodeled, upgraded, actually brought back into a use. This is the first developer, owner of this property who's come forward to do that. So, that's the good part. The bad part is, the difficult part is, our requirements, particularly like the off-site things. For example, putting in sidewalks that haven't been there or curbs that haven't been there, those obviously all add to significant costs. The difference being, you know, this is a small business owner. Unlike a larger business in commercial districts who have capitalized to come in to do these projects, these are the things that create barriers for even minor improvements to occur. Now, that being said, staff is doing everything that they're supposed to do. Engineering, planning, these are the rules, these are the laws, these are in the ordinances. We have discretion on some. They've given them discretion. The question is, can we give them more discretion or waive certain things? But again, maybe the bigger issue is these are policy decisions from the city ultimately, that do we want to make special allowances for these kind of small developments in neighborhoods that otherwise would not be redeveloped? And if we don't do this, and the cost, you know... So, just for example, that encroachment permit, I think is what? How much is the encroachment permit? $7,000, $5,000?
I think it's $7,000 or $8,000.
$7,000 or $8,000 for an encroachment permit that, as you can see, that canopy is there. It's been there. He's not even changing it. So, he's got to pay $7,000 for an encroachment permit for that thing that's been there for 30 years already. So, it's barriers like that that prevent these things from happening. That's my concern. Now, that's a larger policy issue that either we deal with through waiving certain things or providing incentives. But, you know, that's partly a different story, but, you know, it highlights the point here this evening. If this doesn't happen, this building will sit here for a long, long time, I suspect, and it will continue to be obliterating influence. The final thing I would just say, you know, the thing with our districts that we're really focused on, the different commercial districts, this is clearly a commercial corridor in Palm Springs. It is in dire need of renovation there, the properties around it, and this is an opportunity to do that. So, I guess I'd be interested to know what the rest of my colleagues think, but on some level, the question is, to what extent can we give extra latitude on these to try to make this happen? If not, then maybe there is a bigger issue that we need to deal with ultimately to make sure these properties get rehabbed and rehabilitated.
Counsel, other questions?
I just, no, I have a comment.
No questions? All right, well, I'm challenged. I'm challenged with the paragraph Engineering 12, 13, 16, and 17. I can't see, I can't agree to something today based on a promise that a facade improvement grant's going to be issued. And same with Engineering 16 and 17. I can't vote to support something that is based on a guarantee that some other program's going to come through. The encroachment permit, we've made this very confusing. So, is the encroachment permit for Engineering 2 and 4, staff, is that waived? So, the encroachment, 2 and 4, the encroachment permit has not been granted, or the waiver?
No, we're not waiving that. No, that's, I mean, no.
Okay, so what is this document?
That is a document that's provided by the appellant's attorney. That is not a city staff-provided resolution.
Oh, my goodness. So, yeah, is there any other questions?
Just comments.
Yeah, could I ask you just, Steph? So, what is the purpose of the encroachment permit at that cost when the structure's been there and they're not touching it? What does the encroachment permit do?
Arm someone in the public right-of-way. The encroachment permit was not required in the past, and I think the planning director or the planning can describe how, when you start modifying a building or start adjusting the existing building, how to start complying with the conditions. It does protect us. I also have here Rick Minhara, who's has been setting these conditions for over 20 years here at the city. He can explain about what that means.
The mic not working? Mayor, councils, Rick Minhara, engineering. A little bit of clarification. There is an encroachment permit, and there's an encroachment agreement. Two different things. What we're requesting is an encroachment permit to do the work in the public right-of-way, improvements that they may have to do, right? So, if they're going to build new driveways, improve driveways, that sort of thing, it requires an encroachment permit. That's not waived by anybody, and it's based on an evaluation of work. It's not $7,000, right? Whatever that evaluation is, that's how it's calculated. An encroachment agreement is for a canopy that's actually in the public right-of-way now. If somebody was to hit that canopy and it fell on somebody, who's responsible? The city does not want to be responsible for somebody's private piece of property leaning out into the public right-of-way. Currently, it is actually in the public airspace right-of-way. It is over the current property line. The right-of-way dedication that was going to be required is a requirement if you have a commercial building and you're adding more than 10%. That's in the municipal code. That's what it says. If you're adding on, you have to give us right-of-way that maybe we don't have right now. That concession was going to be, if there is a, later on, there is a permit issued or submitted for tenant improvements, they're going to do a bunch of interior stuff and that sort of thing, that was going to be trigger the right-of-way dedication. That's what we were saying, that we would defer till that time, right? But the encroachment agreement But the encroachment agreement is for liability reasons. You do not want that canopy hanging over a public right-of-way without some kind of agreement saying that they're responsible for it in case it hurts. That's the difference between the encroachment permit and the encroachment agreement.
Okay, thank you. Are we ready for comment? I think we're ready for comment. Okay, who's first? Councilmember Gardner.
Now, from reviewing this, staff has made plenty of concessions as it stands, and I agree, Mr. Mayor, with what you were saying in terms of some of these, their agreement based on us providing finances through the facade program is just unreasonable. That's not how we do business here, and I don't want to set a precedent that we start now. But it just looks like from all of this information that staff has bent over backwards to work on this project, and the applicant has not been operating in good faith on this. They're asking for very reasonable things. They've waived substantial amount of things, and I think we should deny per staff's recommendation.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Bernstein?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with what Councilmember Ready said. This has been sort of a vacant, unused place for a long time, and it is really, you know, I applaud the applicant for trying to do something really good on this property. And what I've seen in our conversations tonight and in talking with staff is that I think our staff and our council also wants to see this happen. But there seems to be a lapse in sort of understanding that these requirements, that they have been, not bended, they have waived every possible requirement that they can, and the other ones are either requirements they need to see, or sometimes it is just a drawing or a detailed plan to show that your intent matches our requirements. And so it does not seem like we can be in a position to override that because planning and engineering have been very clear that they don't have the right information to be able to approve this. And so I also agree that I would love to see this happen. I would like to see you continue to work with staff on this and understand that what they have done already is really gone a long way to help move this process forward. So I also agree that it doesn't make sense to deny the appeal, and certainly not for promise of future, for future funds and grants, which, you know, certainly, once you get approved, I would, I would, you know, look at all of those things and entertain. And that's not even within their purview. I think it's our economic development, anyway. So I do agree with Councilmember Gardner on this, and we should not deny the appeal.
Additional comments? Mayor Proton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I want to really thank our staff and also the applicant for all the due diligence. Councilmember Ready for the meetings. You know, we're a city that tries really deeply to make projects that are priorities happen. And I agree with my colleagues that the waivers, the things that we can, you know, defer on have, that there's been many, many recommendations already that have been agreed to, and what remains outstanding are, based off of our code and based off of clear safety measures, that we have to also be really mindful and protect. And so, you know, I just want to make sure that, kind of the confusion of this hearing, this process is really just kind of one moment, but really respect all the meetings that kind of got us to this point, and appreciate everyone's effort to try to get it. But I would agree with staff on denying the appeal.
Thank you. Clearly, there's not enough votes, but I've got, I'll comment and come back to you. I just, you know, I don't disagree with anything that's been said, and I share Councilmember Ready's drive to work with this applicant. You know, I would, I would, I would be okay if real engineering plans were submitted that gave staff the true detail that they need to base some of our waivers on first. And I'm happy that we've been able to come up with the number of waivers that have been granted. I do think, though, that the canopy, you know, we need to get the canopy liability. That has to be, we have to, the city's got to be covered for that. So, and I don't disagree with waiving the 10%, along Palm Canyon. But the other things that are being, that are in disagreement, I don't support the logic that's been presented to us tonight. And there's been a lot of conversation in meetings to try and make this work, and I'd love to see it work. But I think staff really does need engineering plans. The canopy liability would need to be borne by the applicant. And I suspect we could look at the sidewalk on Palo Verde that, you know, could it be deferred until a property, there's another use on that property where that's the sidewalk on the going far east. I could even see that being deferred. But without this stuff included, I wouldn't be able to support. Councilmember Ready?
Yeah, so it, you know, this is one of these things where, obviously, you're right, there's a lot of discussion, a lot of meeting. Staff is doing what they're supposed to do. The applicant is trying to do what we want them to do. I hate for this all to be lost right now, and clearly, there's not the votes to grant what they're requesting, and I understand that. So I'm trying to figure out, is there a solution, a path forward? And perhaps, one possible model could be, if in fact, the applicant thinks that there are some compromise additional things after this hearing that they might be able to do, because if we just deny it right now, it's done, and either the applicant just walks away and it stays that way, or, you know, who knows when it's sold, or what happens.
They can comply.
Or they can comply, but it's very likely they cannot comply because of the cost. The cost that they already have into it and the cost it's going to take to do all this. So my suggestion would be potentially, but again, this will only work if the applicant wants to maybe come a little closer to maybe some of the things we need to continue the hearing. Because if we just deny it, they have to start all over if they, but to continue the hearing, have continued discussion between the applicant and staff, and then, obviously, if they can agree to it, then, obviously, we can bring it back. We don't have to reopen for the hearing. We can just have the business portion and resolve it then. That's just a path. But again, if the owner doesn't think that we can get there with any of that, then it wouldn't be worth doing. So I guess I would ask the applicant that.
We have met with them for, you know, over a year now to get to where we are now, and I would hate to also see it lost. And we have tried very hard to work it out. It has been very expensive for my client, but we're still willing to give it a try. If we could continue this and perhaps come back another time.
So then, Mayor, then I would make a motion, if there's any more discussion at the moment. I would make a motion to continue this hearing to, not at a time certain, but at a time when the planning director feels it's appropriate to bring it back. Again, it wouldn't be to reopen the public hearing. It would just be to finalize the work that we started here.
Prior to finalizing that motion, I don't feel that we've given staff any guidance on, you know, the client's going to come back and comply or say they're going to, you know, have conversations for a long time. Or staff has the ability to really, you know, find that middle line between what the client's coming back with and, like I said, the liability on the canopy, something has to be done on the canopy.
Right, so if I, that's clear. I think the applicant's heard what staff and where council is. But what is clear, you know, maybe there is the actual parking that's resubmitted, and they can work that out. Obviously, what I'm hearing is that you have to have the protection on the canopy. They're hearing that, too. If that's something they're willing to do, and maybe we can work some of the other stuff out. But I think after hearing what happened this evening, everyone kind of knows what we can and can't do. We're not authorizing staff to do anything specific, but the planning director does have discretion in certain areas, which he's done, and when he sees perhaps that traffics, the parking, you know, maybe there's a meeting of the minds when there's more information.
Yeah, I don't disagree. I would, I would support the motion that's being stated with the encouragement to the applicant. You've heard counsel, you've heard, you've heard our comments. So if we want to make the project happen, we really need to come to the table and make it happen, or it's not going to. It's pretty simple. If it comes back again and we're having the same conversation, it's not going to go through. So, Councilmember Gardner?
So this is concerning to me because part of the reason that it's here is because staff has done all of their due diligence, has done everything they can. These are the requests in front of us. There's really not wiggle room here. Either they comply or they don't. They could submit the parking situation, sure, and if our staff reviewed it and said, this is now officially the hammerhead and this works, then they could move forward, but that's the only thing. Everything else they just have to comply with. So, I mean, I don't want to send this back to our staff and have it be debated. It's not a debate. The only thing that could possibly change is if they sent compliant parking and then complied with everything else. That's it. So I just don't want our staff to be going through all of this for another however many months without that clear delineation. They can provide compliant parking and comply with everything else, and that's it.
Is that part of the motion? Councilmember Ready?
I'm not sure how to articulate that in a motion. Well, without just denying the appeal.
I mean, because, but what is going to happen? What, I mean, I guess I'm asking, what do you anticipate staff could possibly do? The only thing that they're missing is, are the, is the actual design that they need for the parking.
Well, for one thing, the planning director was not able to be here this evening, who was a big part of this. So, is a lot of stuff here. It's very confusing. There is discretion that the planning director even says he has on some, and he can do some on others he can't. Staff has heard, I think, where council is, there's things that staff can't change. All I'm saying is that I hate for this to just be gone all of a sudden, because if, the process is, if we deny this, what happens next if they want to bring back a project? Do they have to start all over?
No, they can comply. They can comply with the requirements. I mean, they have been given the requirements, and that is one option. Is that right?
We've committed to this applicant that we would be willing to continue to work with them. They want to build a storage building. They have other places on the parcel where they could build a storage building with less impact and problems with the parking. There are other aspects of the project. This notion of possibly not putting in the sidewalk along Palo Verde. Even though there's no sidewalk that continues, parking needs a direct line of pedestrian access to the buildings that it supports. So we're committed to doing whatever we can to get this applicant into a position that we have an approvable project. But with all due respect, I think we need this applicant to submit a new application. If we want to discount her way fees, that's fine, but we really need to work with this applicant if you guys want us to, not with a continuance of this that's already been beat to death. But to allow us, if they would like to, we're committed to try to work with them to create a project that is conforming, if they can get, as you said, engineering drawings that we can actually approve. But I don't think there's value, my own opinion, I hope it's not inappropriate to say that, but I don't think there's value in continuing this. We can work with them. They'd like to submit a new application, whatever you'd like, but that's what our recommendation would be.
Yeah, no, thank you, and we have you here to say those things. So we need to hear what you, what your view is.
May I be heard on the question of what happens next? So each of the conditions of approval is a, essentially, is to require right-of-way dedication, even though we aren't increasing the burden on the thoroughfare. That is a purely legal issue that we briefed extensively, but the city doesn't have the nexus to require that. So it's really not just a parking diagram and a parking plan. This is really about a whole list of conditions that we believe are, that the city, you know, cannot be opposing. So we're happy, if you, we're happy to continue this hearing. We think most of those things have been worked out. But the legal standpoint here is that the city is, the city staff is recommending denial of our appeal as to all of the conditions of approval, and if you deny it today, we have to, if we want to continue forward, we have to go to Superior Court. We've now exhausted our administrative remedies, and we have to go to Superior Court, and we have to appeal each of those.
You know, obviously, the legal issues have to be resolved in the legal court system. I was looking at if there's, if there's a compromise away short of that. But if, I understand if that's not what you want to do, then...
That absolutely is what we want to do, Councilmember Ready. We don't want to go to Superior Court and fight about whether the city has a nexus to require a right-of-way designate, to require the additional 10 feet. But our timeline will, our clock on doing that will begin tonight if you deny the appeal. We will only have a certain amount of time to go file an appeal in Superior Court if that is what we want to do. I don't know if my client...
Well, that's why I was recommending a continuation.
And that's what we would like to do as well.
But I'm not hearing that there's a desire to bring about...
But that's not going to, but the continuation, staff isn't going to be able to resolve the legal issue you just raised. If that's the sticking point, a court's going to have to decide that.
Staff has already agreed to defer that condition, and that was an acceptable compromise for us. So I think if we continue this today, we come to a global resolution with staff about all of the issues. Most of them have already been, in theory, worked out, like for the ROW, the right-of-way issue has been, in theory, worked out. If we continue this today, then I think that we can, I can see a path for us coming to a resolution with staff about the technical things that are the sticking points.
Okay, thank you.
To clarify, the issue of right-of-way dedication has been offered to this appellant. It has never been accepted. I assume that city staff and our office would continue to extend that offer to the appellant. But it really sounds like this appellant doesn't want to put in ADA-compliant sidewalks behind the curb and gutter. They don't want to put in curb to replace the driveway areas in front of their lot. Those are the types of issues that we've heard tonight, and so those are the issues that the council has to decide. Do you want to send staff and the city attorney back to the negotiating table so that they can spend more time trying to negotiate that? Or does the council want to make a decision tonight?
Yeah, and I would propose, maybe we amend the motion that's being presented, that with, upon a denial of the appeal, we waive fees for a future application. Permit, the permit, the application to submit...
Can I ask a clarification maybe to Ken? So if we deny the appeal, there are, it is already approved with conditions. The project is approved with conditions, and so each of those, they can still try to address with staff. And if staff comes back and says there is a solution, is that within staff's purview to say like, okay, we believe they've met our condition by making these modifications, or we can modify our, you know, condition to accommodate a new, what they're planning, without it having to come back to us? I mean, the project's approved with conditions. They just don't want to meet those, all those conditions. Is that right?
That is correct. A denial of the appeal would still leave the applicant with an approved project with conditions as imposed by staff. And yes, city staff applies those conditions to what is proposed by applicants, day in and day out.
And so you can, the applicant can continue to talk to staff on each of those conditions and try to work it out. I mean, this is not the end of the road. This isn't, staff is not saying, okay, we're not talking to you anymore.
But Councilmember Bernstein, from a legal perspective, the right-of-way dedication, for example, is just one example, right? That's one that, you know, we've already worked out. If it's, if our appeal of that condition, we've worked it out informally, right? But there hasn't been any agreement, as has been pointed out. So it is still on the table legally in terms of whether we need to appeal that to Superior Court. We don't want to go there. So if you put this on, if you continue the hearing, you don't start the time clock on our legal requirement, our deadlines to, you know, to appeal those things from a legal standpoint. We can, we can have the time we need to work with staff to work it out.
Are you saying it's been worked out with the staff? You're saying you've worked it out in your view?
You look at, for instance, Mr. Hadwin's, and he's not here, it was Councilmember Ready, but in the letter that he sent us with the green and yellow, right? Those are all like sort of, that's sort of the working model of what we've worked out. We'll lose all of that from a legal standpoint. I mean, we go back to like, we've exhausted our administrative remedies, and I have 10 days or whatever the deadline is to go ask the Superior Court to make a determination as to whether the city has a right to the additional 10-foot strip of, you know, of land, the right-of-way we submit.
Okay, but those, what staff has approved with the waived conditions and deferrals and accommodations, that doesn't expire. I mean, that staff has presented this as proposed, and Ken or Mr. Lyons or Mr. Hadwin can't come back next week and say, oh, yeah, we said this was okay, but now we're going to say no.
Anyone can agree to anything at any time, and those things can always be agreed to later. But we would like the time to be able to do that without having to go to the next legal step for appealing the conditions that we find to be unreasonable or, you know, illegal.
All right, thank you very much. Councilmember Ready, would you, do you want to finish your motion?
Well, I wasn't sure, you made an amendment or a substitute motion, but you, I wasn't sure what you said.
Well, I don't know if it makes sense, so I won't, I won't make the offer. I'm not hearing anything to tell me that things are going to change.
Okay, then I guess my motion would be that, just, my motion would be we would continue the hearing to a time when the planning director believes it should come back to continue these discussions with the applicant.
Okay, is there a second on the motion?
We wouldn't have to reopen the hearing. We would just continue then, obviously, with the decision.
Second on the motion? Motion dies, is there any other discussion? Do we have another motion on the table?
Motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Motion to accept staff recommendation made by Councilmember Gardner, seconded by Councilmember Bernstein. Okay, Councilmember Ready? Very good. Thank you very much. Staff recommendation passes. Appeal has been denied. Next item is item 3C, which is to request the City of Palm Springs for adoption of an urgency ordinance and the first reading of a regular ordinance to amend Palm Springs Municipal Code Sections 2.05 and 2.06 to clarify Councilmember review of decisions of various boards and commissions and associated timelines. May we have a staff report, please? I think it can be fair...
If I can get out of the queue and into the mic. Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, the item before you tonight are two ordinances. One is a urgency ordinance that would take effect immediately if adopted by a four-fifths vote. And the second item is a regular ordinance that, if the council so chooses, could be adopted or introduced tonight and then adopted a second meeting, and then it would become effective 30 days thereafter. Within the last several months, a review of the city's municipal code revealed that due to some amendments of city ordinances regarding the Architectural Review Committee several years ago, that committee is appointed by the city's planning commission as opposed to all of the other boards and commissions within the city, which are appointed by the city council. We have a unique provision in our municipal code that allows city council members to call up matters of various boards and commissions. However, the language of our municipal code limits that call-up authority to those boards and commissions that are appointed by the city council. Because the ARC committee is appointed by the planning commission, that language doesn't allow city council members to call up decisions of the ARC. And so what this ordinance says is it cleans up that provision and allows the city council to call up directly decisions of the ARC committee. And so again, we've got both the urgency ordinance that would take effect immediately as well as a normal ordinance that would take effect 30 days after the second reading. That concludes my staff presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Discussions from council? Councilmember Bernstein?
Maybe I missed, you said this, but that's, that's because something switched where ARC can now come after planning and not go back to planning, so...
Correct. Several years ago, the council desired to change the process a little bit and have ARC come at a different time than what it was coming before. The council also provided, distinguished some duties between what the planning commission does and what ARC does in terms of limiting ARC to architectural review and then having the planning commission review things like site layout and design and whatnot. And so as part of that ordinance, it also amended the time period within which the decisions are made.
So ideally, this decision would have made then, just we didn't really think about, I mean, right, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Comments? Do we have a motion to adopt the urgency ordinance? Councilmember Bernstein, Mayor Proton? City Clerk?
Thank you. An interim urgency ordinance amending Section 206030A and D and 025040... An interim urgency ordinance amending Section 206030A and D and 2025040 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code regarding city council's authority to review decisions by the city boards and commissions whose members are not appointed by the city council, allowing notice of decisions to be served by electronic mail and establishing a consistent 15-day deadline by which to appeal a decision by a board or commission to the city council.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the first reading of the regular ordinance? Is this, oh. Councilmember Gardner, Mayor Pro Tem. Okay, City Clerk?
Ordinance amending Section 206030A and D and 205040 of the Palm Springs Municipal Code regarding city council's authority to review decisions by city boards and commissions whose members are not appointed by the city council, allowing notice of decisions to be served by electronic mail and establishing a consistent 15-day deadline by which to appeal a decision by a board or commission to the city council.
Thank you. Before we ask about taking a break, can I call, we'll change our order a little bit. We have some youth in the audience that want to make public comment, and I'd rather, I'd like to get them out of the way, if we can. So I'm not sure the order, so if you all just want to come up, and you can tell us the order. Frankie Espinoza, Maya Espinoza, and Michael Espinoza. Just introduce yourselves so we know who's speaking. Okay?
My name is Frankie Espinoza. My name is Frankie Espinoza. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and members of the community. I'm here tonight on behalf of the families, volunteers, and children who are part of AYSO Soccer in Palm Springs. For decades, this league has been an affordable and safe outlet for kids. We welcome everyone, and we've even built a special needs team so that every child has a place to belong. Yet the Recreation Department has told us they don't know the future of AYSO Soccer. They've taken away our ability to run a snack bar, and instead of supporting our league, they're making it harder for us to serve our youth. And to make matters worse, the maintenance of Demuth Park is not being cared for. More than half of our season, board members as volunteers, myself included, are out at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock in the morning on Saturdays, sweeping water off flooded fields so our kids can even play. We've asked maintenance to turn off the sprinklers. We've sent photos and reported holes in the fields. Nothing changes. This has been ongoing for more than three years. Families and even our special needs children have had to leave their games to find restrooms because the city left bathrooms locked. That is unacceptable. Despite these obstacles, our kids show up, our volunteers show up. Former players like myself return to give back because this program makes them feel safe and valued. But what message is the city sending when it continues to neglect them? We hear discussions of new programs like pickleball, but why ignore the hundreds of children already playing soccer here every single week? These kids are the future workers, leaders, and families of Palm Springs. If the city refuses to care for them now, you are telling them they don't matter. And let me be clear, the lack of communication from recreation leadership only makes things worse. The current manager has not met with us as a board and refuses to address us as a whole team. That is outrageous. We are not, we are not asking for profit, we are asking for care. Support our youth, support our volunteers, and allow AYSO Soccer to thrive. Our children deserve better, Palm Springs must do better. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Espinoza, and thank you for letting me speak today. I wanted to talk about Palm Springs AYSO Soccer and why is it important for the city to support it. I've been playing since I was three years old, and now I'm 11. Soccer has always been a big part of my life. The coaches and volunteers make us kids feel valued, and the fields are where I feel safe and at home. But sometimes our fields have holes or are flooded with water, especially in the mornings, that makes it hard for us to play safely. Soccer teaches us teamwork, respect, and discipline, but we need fields that are cared for. I see the city put a lot of work into things like pickleball and other adult sports, which is great, but kids need that same support, too. Please help keep our field safe and ready, because when you support soccer, you're supporting the future of Palm Springs. Thank you.
Good job. Maya?
Hi, my name is Maya Espinoza. I am nine years old, I live in Palm Springs. I love playing soccer. I want to ask Palm Springs to please support AYSO Soccer. Sometimes our fields are not safe. We even have to play at other places. Some of our games, some of our games have been canceled because the fields are all full of water, and in my soccer practices, the sprinklers turn on, we can slip and get hurt. Soccer is very special to me and to a lot of different kids. It helps us exercise, too. I hope Palm Springs City can help AYSO. Thank you.
Very good job. Thank you, Maya. Okay, we will continue public comment, but do we need a short break? Frankie, can you share your contact information with the city clerk for us, please? Okay, do we, do we want a break, or are we okay for the last item? Okay. Okay, we're, five minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Okay, what time is it? It's 8:23. Our watch is synced? Did your buttons change? No? Item 1, we will continue with the item 3D, which is to authorize the city manager to advance work on the Palm Springs Convention Center modernization project and direct staff to continue with project planning. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Scott. Go ahead. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. First of all, what I wanted, we want to take a few minutes to bring you another update on a lot of the significant work that staff and the community, and especially, I know Mayor DeHart and Councilmember Bernstein have been leading a group of stakeholders, and we've been doing a tremendous amount of work on trying to decide how to move forward with our Convention Center modernization project. It's a huge project, it's an important project. We've been working with a number of stakeholders in the community who have been just, you know, wonderful and staying committed to this and helping us out. I know we have a few members of our stakeholder committee out in the audience, listening and visiting here tonight. So our goal tonight is there's no particular actionable or financial decisions that we have to make. We want to just give you an update on the work of the stakeholders committee, and especially for the public, too, to bring the public up to speed, and so we can go forward from there. I think what we're hoping to do at the end of this meeting tonight is just have some affirmation from the city council that we're on the right track to continue what we're doing, and there certainly will be many more points of return for us coming back to the council for approval on things. What I'm going to do is ask our Chief Economic Development Officer, Wayne Olson, to give us a short recap on some of the information that's in the staff report. I don't know if, also, our, one of our communications consultants, Mark Weyer, has been doing a tremendous amount of work with us on this. He may have a few words or two, and I know Mayor DeHart and Councilmember Bernstein will have some remarks, maybe also to share with the full council and the community on all the work that they've been leading to help us continue to move this on. So with that, I will turn the presentation for a few slides over to Wayne.
Thank you, City Manager. Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, members of the public, I'll be brief. I have just a few slides tonight, four, that will review the staff report in high-level detail. I'll try not to repeat what Scott said, but I, my script is based on my slides here. So I'm pleased tonight to share an important update on the Palm Springs Convention Center modernization and connectivity project. You're gonna see some images from CSL here, a couple of them that overview the entire project. It's a project that reflects both our city's vision and commitment to economic growth. Over the past several months, as Mr. Stiles mentioned, he's been actively engaging our community via Stakeholder Working Group that the mayor and the council called for in January of this year. Work has been underway, and as a result of that, the project is going to be naturally pivoting away from concept and towards a more, towards a more technical planning and implementation phase. So staff thought it would be prudent to bring an update for council's review. The preliminary modernization project budget is approximately $125.5 million. The project encompasses renovations and expansion of the east entrance and urban connectors. The finance and TID teams are studying various sources for funding, reflecting the peer-reviewed list of capital improvements that continues to evolve. Let me hop ahead to this line. Several working groups were formed under the stakeholder group, and they have been also working all summer. Some of the members are here tonight, and to discuss improvements at the center itself and urban design strategies that better connect downtown with the convention center. You can see some of the recommendations that came from the September 3 meeting of the working groups. There are four. The capital improvements group, which is named Construction here, the urban design working group, which is Connectivity, the public finance group, which is headed up by the Director of Finance, Chris Mooney, who is also here tonight, and the TID, potential revenue source group that's looking and studying and researching various ways to raise revenue to support the project. I wanted to highlight briefly, I'm gonna go back one slide, highlight briefly what is coming up next and recommended from the, from the four working groups, and we wanted to share that with you tonight. This fall, the city began issuing requests for qualifications for three critical roles, and our procurement director is here tonight if you have questions about these. An owner's representative, which you see on the left to the slide in front of you, to oversee construction. An owner's rep is a technical role, which typically acts as a stand-in during technical meetings on behalf of the owner. So my department and the city engineer will be working with this owner's rep on this piece of work. An architect and engineering firm, obviously, to design the, design and modernization of the project, both on the interior and exterior. And then finally, later this month, we'll be issuing an urban connector RFQ, which is for an urban design team, and importantly, has two elements. The urban design menu of sorts that they will deliver to this council later as that design develops, as well as a brand identity process that's going to start to identify the brand of the district, as well as marketing assets, recommended marketing assets. And those will come forward. So as you see in your review, all this works lead to several goals. A vibrant, activated convention district that links seamlessly with our downtown and enhances the convention ear and citizen pedestrian experience. It also sets the goal of a modernized, expanded... It also sets the goal of a modernized, expanded convention center that can attract larger, higher-quality events, and as a result, more economic growth to our community. A transparent, and finally, a transparent, inclusive process, and importantly, with community engagement built into every, every phase as much as is practicable. But most importantly, I think this project is more about, more than about bricks and mortar, it's about ensuring Palm Springs remains a hub for business tourism and economic vitality for decades to come. So tonight, staff is requesting council's authorization, as the city manager mentioned, to continue advancing the planning and work that advances the modernization project. All future decisions, design approvals, for example, financing decisions, project budgets, construction contracts, et cetera, et cetera, they will all retune to you for review and community discussion throughout the lifetime of the project. So tonight's approval is to continue advancing the work and planning only. Finally, two of your colleagues that serve on the stakeholder group, led by Mayor Rhonda Hart, and includes Councilmember Bernstein, are heading up the committee along with Scott Stiles, and I'm going to turn it back to Scott now if he has any other follow-up comments.
Thank you, Wayne. No final comments from my end, we wanted to keep this brief, but I know, Mayor, council member, I know, maybe you have some words you wanted to share?
Yeah, I applaud the folks that are sitting around the table in the working group, and I think our community can be very proud in the work that's being done to really ensure our convention center, the process that we're going through is going to ensure the future that it will continue to be a world-class, competitive convention center. You know, we're seeing, I just heard a few days ago, we've lost 77 conventions already, and what we are learning and what we know is our convention center, we haven't kept up with the Joneses, and we've lost the bells and whistles, and we don't have the latest technology in our convention center. And there's a huge complex in San Diego that we know we're already losing future bookings to. And our investment, this investment is, is going to help position us into a spot where we'll continue to attract these conventions that are looking for the brightest and latest and best. And everybody wants to come to Palm Springs, we just need to give them the tools that they can use when they get here. So I'm very proud of the project and, and staff is putting in a lot of work to get this project or continue this project going at lightning speed. And, and our hotel and tourism and restaurant community has, has all been a part of the process, and many thanks to, to everybody involved. Councilmember Bernstein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I just wanted to add a few other more detailed comments, and council's already reviewed this project conceptually, and so tonight is really just to keep, keep this as, have responsible planning and oversight and keep everybody in council informed, informed and the community about what's happening. As the mayor mentioned, we have this, and Wayne, we have this committee that's working on it. We've broken into four groups, the capital improvements, the tourism improvement district, the design, urban design connectivity, and the public finance. And I have to say, the, this group has put in a tremendous amount of time and expertise and effort, all on a volunteer basis, and, and part of by designing these four groups is that we get, you know, a lot of broad support, and we get some real expertise in each one of them. And, and the other thing, which, you know, we talked about what's happening in San Diego, but one of the things about that Palm Springs has its unique is this connectivity to our downtown and to our local businesses and our arts community, and so that is not something that every city has, where you can walk out of a convention center and go to any number of restaurants and, and theater and all kinds of things. So part of this connectivity is really, and you may have seen it in Wayne's presentation, focusing obviously the main arteries are Andreas and Amato, but really looking at Takwitz and, and Alejo to reach as much of the business community that we can. And the other just sort of things, you know, this is, it really is an investment in our community. We saw this when we did Measure J, and we revitalized our downtown, that it has paid off. We know that our TOT is responsible for something like 25% of our general fund, and so investing in a convention center that helps our hotels and our sales tax and our restaurants pays back by having money to support our parks and public safety and all of our other expenses. So Wayne also mentioned the RFQs that are going out, these are requests for qualifications, not necessarily for proposals at this point. And one is the owner's representative, which is key because we have a lot going on in our city, and, and we need to take some of the burden off of staff, and that'll do it. And obviously, the architecture and engineer to do this, the building will stay pretty much as it looks now, but we'll be sort of try to fix some of the things that, that we realize, like making the east side more accessible and, and better use of the Jacque Lee Houston Plaza. And then the urban design and branding will go out, and that'll either be one or, or two different groups, and this is important because branding is something that we have a strong design community and branding community, and, and we're going to encourage a lot of involvement from our local community to get involved into this. So the work is really continuing, there's a lot more outreach going to go to our business community especially, and to the neighboring community around the convention center, as well as a lot of our different groups. And I know we have Daily Strategies who did a similar with the airport, reaching out to almost any group that wants to be involved, but certainly the business and community groups. So I think this is exciting, I think it is moving at a very fast pace, but with careful oversight, and I think we're looking at really by 2030 to have completion and something to start, really starting next year in terms of something that's actually starts to be visible. So I think it's exciting. I will mention, you know, we have the community, we do have our, the Aguacalante tribe has been involved, since it's, obviously, they have land and property nearby and, and an interest in this. So it's an exciting project, and, and, and the mayor set up a lightning-speed task force, and I would say it's moving at lightning speed. So thank you.
Excellent. Any discussion questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Garner?
Thank you so much, everyone, for working on this and bringing it back to share with us. I think it's really exciting, and it's true, we do need to make sure that we're keeping up and able to attract as many different conventions as we can to this city, but I'm, I just want to say I'm most excited about this urban connection. And we've talked about this a lot in the past, and just the importance of being able to create a more walkable city. And really, like, the most ripe area for that is our downtown and connecting it to our convention center. We've talked a lot about the difficulties in not having a convention center hotel, but if we create this really cool connection to downtown from the convention center, then that leads people to get excited about staying at some of our small hotels and wanting to have that experience as well. And we know that the weather is really nice here for walking in the mornings and in the evenings, when people are usually going to be walking to and from the convention center, really year-round almost. So it's, it's really ideal, and then the best thing is that residents can also enjoy this as well. It really connects all of us, so I think it's, it's a really cool part of this whole project, and I'm glad that it's being, being considered, because I really think the, this next generation cares about being outside and, and wants to see the surrounding city, not just the inside of a convention center. That's why we have to make these updates, right? But so thank you to the mayor and to Councilmember Bernstein for all of your work on this, and to the task force members who are working tirelessly on this, I know, really appreciate you all. I'm just very excited to see what's possible.
Mayor Protem?
Yeah, um, thank you for the overview and summary, Wayne and Scott. It's exciting to see this work move forward so quickly in this year, and really, the engagement across our stakeholders and our business community, who are really part of the discussions and strategy on how we make this possible from the start, is excellent. One suggestion that I think might be probably appropriate next is kind of what, in addition to the stakeholder outreach and kind of next steps on the outreach work that Daily Strategies will probably be doing, what is the community outreach? How, if community members are curious or interested in understanding where we are in this work, where do they go to find that? So probably Engage Palm Springs was my initial thinking, having a site landing where someone can understand, like, what is the goal of the modernization project? How is the convention center kind of the centerpiece of our Palm Springs economy? You know, kind of understanding what those working groups are doing, you know, not like minutes, per se, of those meetings, but what is, how is it structured and, and what conversations are roughly happening? Even like an approximate timeline, you know, ideal, so that just, our whole city really understands why this is so, so important. You know, the, we want a strong, everyone wants a strong economy, people want to move and live in a place that feels like business is booming, it is growing, it is a place where you can buy a home and build a career, and our convention center is crucial to that here in Palm Springs. And so I just really want to make sure when we're thinking about community outreach, it's the, everyone who lives here has a stake in that, and, and I want to make sure that our outreach efforts kind of reflect that as well. But yeah, so much, this is moving forward just from the engagement on the stakeholders, and I appreciate that so much. One, one question I had in, you know, maybe this has already happened, but in addition to kind of where business is, you know, we mentioned the San Diego project or the San Diego Convention Center, but just cities that may be similar or places where we can learn? So I'm thinking in particular, like, how can the stakeholder groups or working groups learn from, like, for instance, Austin? If you haven't been to Austin, Austin's a great example, where there's a really strong convention center. They have designed a lot of their city based off of South by Southwest with its multi-site. There's a lot of urban connectivity, there's a lot of beautiful radical shade all over Austin, it is a hot place, but it's possible to be comfortable. And so, you know, I think, I just want to make sure when we're talking about where we can learn from, it's not just the convention centers that work, but the cities that are doing really interesting things that we might be able to learn from. So happy to kind of share more offline, but I just kind of want to make sure that, that we're not being so building-focused, right, when we're thinking of where we can get ideas from, so. But just really, just deep gratitude for, for staff and the mayor and Councilmember Bernstein for moving this forward, and really excited to get the whole city excited about this modernization of the convention center.
Councilmember Ready?
Well, I didn't need to repeat all that, but hey, I support this 1,000%, you guys are doing a great job, Peggy, Robert, and staff, so, and Wayne, so anyway, thank you. I, just a quick question, with regard to if districts kind of materializes, what is the sort of the timeframe that that would come before council? This time, sometime this year?
Yeah, first, a couple things. I did want to respond briefly to Mayor Protem Soto's comment about communication. We are actively putting that together, I think as soon as tomorrow, we're going to start rolling out information about what we've talked about here to begin to make sure that the community is starting to understand it. We're, we're doing a dedicated website on Engage Palm Springs, and I know as council members remember from all the work we did with community engagement with the airport and everything else, we've got a lot, lot more that's coming. We're just, we're just touching the iceberg here on what we're going to be doing all throughout the community, so a lot more to come. Councilmember Ready, to your point, what we're trying to do in the immediate course, and I'll let Wayne maybe clean some of this up for me, is we're doing RFQs for some of those key areas that we need to start understanding who's out there, who's qualified, who's interested in doing this work with us. And so we're going to be, we're going to be interfacing with those RFQs, seeing who's there, and then in each of those areas, we'll be bringing those back to you for your consideration and approval. So I think those would be some of the immediate tasks that we, that are in front of us. Wayne, anything to add to that?
Yeah, thank you, City Manager, Mayor, and Councilmember Ready. With regard to the district itself, the Palm Springs Convention Center District, we would, looking at, the staff report states we're looking at an award of the architect and the owner's rep in November, we'll bring that back to council for their review and approval or consideration, and then the urban design and branding team would be back to you for consideration in December, and I would expect that work would start immediately in January. So we're, we're trying to get this done in '26 and hand it over to engineering, then to modify the urban design district, big picture into actual plans for engineering. So we've been challenged, I'm challenging our team to get this all completed by 2028, but, you know, time will tell, we're hoping to get it done as quickly as possible.
And, and the urban design, the walkability is, is going to go in parallel to construction at convention center. So it's not going to wait for the convention center to get done. We may finish with the urban design, the walkability plan, well ahead of convention center, so that is kind of exciting.
And so Mayor, I would just like to note that on that front beam in front of the convention center now, did you see the art? There's, behind that facade, there's a beam with all the council member's signature on it, so I'm looking forward to this council doing their beam, and so we'll, we'll note that, make sure that that happens.
How'd they climb, how'd they climb up there?
Well, actually, before they lifted it up, so.
All right. There's, what's, there's a motion on the floor.
I wanted to add one more comment, actually, two more. One, we're very lucky, we have Conventional Wisdom, who's been working with us, and they have worked for 350 conventions, I think, centers, and so they also do understand what goes in the city, which was an excellent point. And the other thing, which the mayor brought up at the last meeting, and I know Mayor Protem has brought up in other contexts, is that, one of the things is that we look to modernize this building, is that as we do it, we look to how we have the maintenance and keeping up to date as we're going along, so we're not faced in, with deferred maintenance down the line. This is a huge investment, and it is important to maintain that building as we go, because this is something that, that is going to last for a long time in the future. So I wanted to add that point that the mayor brought up last time, at the last meeting. Thank you.
Okay, motion on the table to accept staff recommendation? All right, thank you. Next, I am his public comment for non-agenda items, and see, you can do a presentation with four slides. See, now you've proved it. Public comment on non-agenda items, we've got two minutes for each speaker. First is Daniela Nunez.
Daniela was here, but she's online now.
Oh, okay. Daniela, can you hear us? Your opportunity to speak is now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Okay, hi, and apologies for having to leave the meeting, had to get home to my daughters, but hello, council, mayor, council members, staff members. I just wanted to piggyback off of Frankie Espinoza and her children's concern for AYSO eighty for Palm Springs and the soccer park and conditions. My daughter, my oldest daughter played, my two youngest are about to play this season, and it is very difficult when we literally live around the corner from the park, and I, all last season, sorry, I said, all last season, I had to drive, you know, after volunteering to coach a team, I had to drive to DHS every Saturday morning to coach my team after having practices in Palm Springs and having to try to explain to the parents, like, I'm not sure what's happening, you know, we have to play in DHS, or my oldest, who played last year, all her games were in Indio and La Quinta, I missed all of them. It's just very unfortunate when the fields are here, they have the space, and we just cannot seem to be able to play there, or the season gets pushed back, we really didn't start until January, so we went into March, when normally soccer season starts October, November, and we're done by mid-January. So I just wanted to, you know, ask, you know, the Recreation District, or, I'm sorry, I don't have the proper words, and I wasn't fully prepared, but just whoever can help us out and do something, get us some help, I mean, we have the volunteers, if that's what's needed, but we just need the city's help to help coordinate it and give us what we need to make sure that the kids in Palm Springs can play in Palm Springs and stay in Palm Springs. That way, they don't have to go to other places, because, you know, it, I would hope that the city would want the youth of the city to stay in the city and help, you know, progression and continue what you guys have, you know, what you guys work for and what you guys are trying.
Thank you, Daniela. Final speaker is Michael Joseph Pitkin.
After Michael, we have one more online.
Natalie? Natalie?
Mm-hmm.
Michael Joseph Pitkin, as a theistic Satanist, I was denied HIV care at DAP Health. They used my Ryan White Care Act to leverage their Borrego merger. They denied me the board meetings, and their BIPOC care team refused me and my doctor's medical requests. Without medical care, I not only lost housing, I lost my transportation. Jewish Family Services of San Diego violated their housing grant. Martha's Village and Kitchen violated my civil rights as Allied Universal Security Services required my HIPAA before they will allow an H-Miss case manager. The one service I have left is the well in the desert, well in the desert. I just lost Coachella Valley Rescue Mission. Both the well and the mission refused Sunline Allen Siemens multi-city charity bus pass request for two-day passes a month via my ADA special needs accommodation exception request. They then turned around and gave passes to non-citizens and others who are double-dipping: women, infants, children, American Indians, veterans, undocumented people living with HIV, seniors on Medicare. These all have their own transportation programs. My fraud notice stops non-citizen identity privacy federal protections. Palm Springs cease and desist the religious provocations and civil rights violations. I do not consent.
Thank you. We have Natalie Ruiz on Zoom.
Hi, hello, good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight.
Welcome.
So I'm here, kind of what Daniela and Frankie, just pigging back off whatever they're saying, just to kind of really represent the youth and show that they have somebody on their side. So I'm here as a NAYSO volunteer, but most importantly, I'm here as a mother. I'm here as someone who's deeply concerned, because right now, our kids feel like they're being left behind. As of right now, just to give a little bit more backstory, we have not received our field of use contract, so we don't even have one created. And this isn't because we haven't tried. We have been reaching out to the Park and Recreation Department multiple times through every channel we can, and we're still waiting. We, as of right now, are only getting, hey, we're going to move it up the ladder, this and that. So there's no clear timeline or no confirmed start date, just vague updates and continued silence. So tonight, we are asking not for favors, not for funding, but just for a basic follow-through. I know that the park does need to get reseeded, but as of right now, they're giving us a possible start date for the season would be November, right? That's nearly half of the season already lost. I would like for us to have a better understanding of when the contract will be created, so we have no further delays. So we can begin organizing and planning something that we've been trying to do for months. And most importantly, what I really want tonight is just open, honest communication from the Park and Recreation Department. We're not looking for conflict. We really are just looking for a partnership. We want to work together, be there for the youth. But right now, it seems like we're just being ignored, and that's kind of just disheartening. So, thank you, and thank you for giving me the time.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
We have no further speakers.
How about that? Now we have City Council, City Manager request for upcoming agenda development. I've got two items that I'd like to ask council support on. You know, the Arts Commission has been challenged for some time because they, they can't really plan forward, because they don't know when the developer in lieu fees may be clawed back at any time. The, when the original policy was written, ordinance was written, there was no timeline on when a developer needed to say that they were going to use their fees, that they, their in lieu fees that they paid for an art project on their property. So it's, and, and this was created 25 years ago at least. So we, I'm asking that we have staff bring this in lieu fee part of the developer agreement back, so we can put a timeline on it, and, and that we can require developers to identify the work of art and have the plan submitted to the Arts Commission before they get their occupancy permit. So then the Arts Commission knows that that money is going to be used for an art project, and they're not going to wait a year or two years before a developer would come back and potentially can ask for that money to come, to be used again. So it's just something to help our Arts Commission have better planning for years in advance. And then the second item is, we are, we're up to address our STR ordinance, and we, we previously have said we're going to address modifying the ordinance or looking at the ordinance again by the end of this year. So we only have a few meetings left, and I want to make sure that we bring that forward, and, and that, that perhaps it isn't a need for us to address updating or changing the entire policy, that it could be something as simple as we extend the current policy two years with just making some administrative changes that we know code compliance wants to bring forward, and that vacation rental organization is, is working with code compliance to bring forward.
I think we already talked about that, and the City Manager, he hasn't given a schedule yet, but I think the, the updates to vacation rental, I think, I thought we already agreed that they're going to come back. So.
So double agreement. There you go.
On the arts thing, I just wanted to mention, because I had brought this up separately also to staff, I think the Arts Commission was working on some other updates, including there is no provision put in for maintenance of art when developers do it, and other ones, and also potential uses of public arts funds that could be for other things that aren't necessarily.
But that's not to the in lieu fee, though. So the in lieu fee is very specific.
But it's also tied to that, because if the, if a developer pays for public art, there is no maintenance, or if it goes into the city's budget for it, there is no thing. So the whole, couldn't the whole thing just be done at once?
We don't own it, unless the developer gives it to the city.
Well, if, if they put money into public art that the Arts Commission pays for, they're not allocating any money to pay to upkeep that part of it. So I'm saying the Arts Commission's been working on this. So if they have other things that goes into that, maybe include that.
Yeah. And I brought the conversation up with the Chair some time ago.
Do you want to do yours first? So I agree on those. I think we're all on.
Councilmember Garner?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to have that come back. But I did want to just clarify, when I asked for the short-term rentals to come back, I did want to look at changes, because Vron has requested some changes. A lot of them are also administrative, very minor things. And I think if we can just look at it all at once and be done, because we did promise when we went through these revisions years back, that we would periodically review and make updates if changes needed to be made.
The Appeals Board also asked for a couple.
Yeah, the Appeals Board asked.
And the event houses.
Yeah, I think it's, it's ripe for just some minor changes. And again, I, I do want to make it clear, these are very minor requests that were asked. It doesn't mean that we would grant all of them, but we're not, we're not opening up a huge can of worms, in my opinion. It's, it's pretty reasonable. So just to not scare anyone.
Anything else? Mayor Protem.
So I just want to confirm, the STR updates or amendments that we are going to review are the minor ones before, to be done this fall, and, and also to do a full review within two years? Or are we saying we want to review all of, do a full review this fall?
It's, it's going to, it's going to come back. And I just was suggesting that when it does come back, that we're not addressing a 36 versus 26 adjustment, and that since it's been working well at 36, postpone that decision for two years, and not, not make that a contentious issue that we'll be addressing.
We, we have to address it, though, because it's in the ordinance that it will change to 26 in January.
Yeah, but we, okay.
So we, we have to change that language so that it goes, that stays at 36, if we wanted to do that.
But we had to look at it this fall.
Yeah, unfortunately. I hear what you're saying, though.
City Manager? Oh, Councilmember Ready?
Yes, if, and I'm not sure when you can fit this in, but the, the city attorney, an ordinance that would update to bring it into compliance with state law on the cannabis ordinance is not changing the tax and any of the provisions, other than updating to the state law with regard to lounges being able to have entertainment. There's, it's a minimal amount of entertainment, like a comedian, things of that nature. So the state law had changed, allow a certain amount of, of entertainment in lounges. If you could bring that back for City Council to consider if we want to include that in ours.
Isn't, that's in our list already, isn't it? Because I, I agreed with us doing that some time ago.
I was just looking at sort of the rest of the year.
Oh, it's not there.
Mayor, councilmembers, we, the staff is working on, on bringing that back, and we can find out a date and have that on the list in the future.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I think it would be, it would be great if we could have, because the cannabis is just alignment with state law. So it's not going to be, you know, a massive issue. But it would be nice if we can get it in, because it's an economic issue for our owners, you know, by the end of the year, if we could. Councilmember Bernstein?
Yeah, I had, I had a request and then a couple announcements. The request I had is, in talking to a developer, there are some issues in our hotel renovation incentive program and also new construction, that I think our Economic Development Department may have looked at, and I would like to have their recommendations to come back to council. These incentive programs were designed so that they, they're not a financial outlay. They are an incentive for either new construction or to, or to renovate and just to make sure that it's up to date. I know there's at least one project where it doesn't quite cover that, that if council's agreeing and Economic Development supports it, that they have come back with some amendments to that.
I'm not following you exactly, but I know Wayne is working on bringing something back to us, and I don't know, is that?
I think we haven't given staff, I haven't counsel direction that, that we would like staff to do this, so I'm asking for confirmation that we want that.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think he's working on it, but.
There's two things. We have an hotel renovation program, which we have, and there's some things that have been left out of that. And there's a new construction thing that we've dealt with on a case-by-case, but there's other things that are omitted from it. And then there's, there's a third part of it for hotels that are renovating in historic buildings, which is not covered at all. So, which, they need to have a certain incentive to deal with that. I had a couple of announcements, if I can, should do that now?
But no, let's let the City Manager give his.
Yeah.
Agenda items, and then we'll come back for announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be, I'll be pretty brief here. And my apologies on the STR issue. So, yes, we've included that on the October 22 agenda. So, as we just go through this tentative upcoming schedule here, we tried to plan out the, these next four meetings for you, give you a little indication of what's coming. I do want to mention for the general public that for our September 25 meeting, that's on a Thursday, not a Wednesday. So we moved that particular meeting for accommodations for the council, I think. And so we'll have that on a Thursday. You'll see that we have the Fine Food Bank, we'll have a brief presentation, which they've done for us before, all the good work they're doing. We have our Ramone Road, an eminent domain resolution that we put on hold a couple meetings ago that we need to put back on. And then, of course, our, we've been working on bringing back a comprehensive fee schedule, and that'll be a big piece of what we talk about at, at the next meeting, as well as some final updates for you on the convention center management agreement. That's, that is all getting finalized per year requests, and we'll be coming back with some work on that, with the Oakview Group poised to assume management responsibility on October 1, I believe, or the very end of September, I think.
Scott, will we be getting the fee schedule to approve at the September 25 meeting? Are we getting it to ask questions and then be able to study and approve it at a future meeting?
I am, I believe that the Finance Director is hoping to present it for approval. And so I'm assuming what you're going to be asking me is, are we going to get it in plenty of time to review it in advance?
Yeah, how quickly can we get it? Because I, I know I need, I need, I'm going to need time to review this.
Yeah. I will, I will speak with him tomorrow about that and convey, you know, your wishes. And if we can get it to you, you know, tomorrow, we will. So you have as much time as possible.
Yeah.
But we'll, we'll bring that forward.
Okay.
On the October 22, you'll see, we do need to bring back our Airport Economic Impact Study that's been done. We'll have a short presentation. We have the Gene Autry Housing Project, Affordable Housing Project that we've been working on. Our staff will present that project to you for consideration. And then, also, Wayne has been doing a lot of work. We want to get our Economic Development Strategic Plan before you for approval, so we can move forward with some of those recommendations if council supports them. And then, I think, as Mayor Protem Soto has mentioned on it from the dais a couple of times, we've been working with city attorneys, the city attorney on some vehicle sales ordinance legislation to consider. And as I indicated, the short-term rental information will come forward on the 22 as well. And right now, we're working on those, on those standard amendments that you asked us to bring back some time ago. And then, of course, council has any other direction and thoughts they want to have with any other amendments to that. We'll be, we'll be ready to receive those, whatever your direction is for us. And then, we're still a little far out, a few more months out. We'll give a little legislative platform update from Townsend. We've got them working on, on all of the city's vision and trying to track things based on what our city operational vision is. And then, and then on December 10, we've got a number of appointments and council reorganization business to attend to. If I can just recap very quickly, I've got, I've made notes. We've talked about the short-term rental, as staff will start to work on the Arts Commission in lieu fees, timeline, all of that, the cannabis sort of adjustments that were brought forward. And then I have had some conversations with, with our Economic Development staff about the hotel incentive renovation and new construction. So we're working on some thoughts that we can bring forward for you to, that might be helpful for developers who are not just renovating existing rooms and bringing their hotel up to upgraded standards, but may want to expand, add new construction onto it. So that's some of the thought, I think, aligned along the lines of what I heard you say. So I've got all four of those things to add into future schedule. That's all I have. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mayor, so if I ask City Manager, so do you think, like, for example, the cannabis could be in, on the November meeting? Or you're going to try and work those in?
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Like, the cannabis could be on the November 12 meeting? Or, so you're going to try and work those in on this, this timeframe?
Yeah, just looking at the schedule, I think we'll have a bunch of stuff on, in October, but you, you might be right, Councilmember, this November 12 time might be a good target for us to hit.
Thank you.
Any other additions? Okay, beautiful. Oh, announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, just tomorrow is September 11. Never forget Remembrance Day. Start, there will be a ceremony, Palm Springs Fire Station, beginning 8:15, ceremony starting at 8:30. Monday, the 15th, is my community meeting at Vista Del Monte Elementary School at 5:30. The 17th is the Racket Club Road Creek Configuration Meeting at Vista Del Monte at 5:30. And it's also the Palm Springs Chamber of Commerce Taste at Palm Springs from 5 to 9. Thank you.
Councilmember Ready?
Mayor, if I could just ask the City Manager for, could you just, maybe the next meeting, give us a quick update on the escalator at the airport? I know it was out again. So if you could just maybe give us an update on that project. Thank you.
Certainly.
All right, beautiful. Next regular scheduled meeting. Next regular scheduled meeting will be held, I think, Thursday, right? Thursday, September 25? Thursday, September 25 at 5:30 PM. And as a reminder to folks, the October 8 City Council meeting is canceled. The meeting is now adjourned.